Good evening, everyone in here and up in the air. Welcome to the September 10th, 2024 meeting of the Fitchburg Zoning Board of Appeals. This meeting is being held at the Legislative Building on 700 Main Street. We have a fairly long docket for today to get through, so I am going to try to keep it quick for everybody here. I'm going to begin by having us stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Talbot, would you care to lead us in that pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Talbot. Right. So I now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting an audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask that if anyone in the audience is recording this meeting, please stand, identify yourselves for the record now, stating your name and city of residence. Seeing none, which is usually the case as FATV does all our recording for us. At this time, I would ask that everyone place their electronic devices into silent mode so we can all enjoy each other's company. I wanted to provide a clarification before we start with the matters. We have a very active agenda for the month of September that has caused us to schedule a second meeting. So on Tuesday, September 24th, at 6:00 PM, we will have a second meeting, and that will hear the matters associated with 1341 Ringe Road, 21 Market Street, 348 Elm Street, and 96 Almont Road. If anyone would like to see the agenda for that meeting, you are welcome to go on to the city's website, and that and every other agenda is posted in the Agenda Center. We are going to start with reviews this evening. Review cases will be called generally between 6:00 and 7:00 PM. They may be called out of order depending on who is here and who is not yet here. We are going to start with the first matter, that is ZBA 23-39, 447 Water Street, Rayco Motors and Harold Mateo. This is the review of a special permit under Section 181.313D 11 and 12 to reestablish a business as a small motor vehicle sale and repair shop pursuant to Section 181.94, located in the neighborhood business district map. Mr. Mateo, welcome to the meeting.
Good evening. How are you?
Can you please, for the minutes, just state your name and city of residence?
Yes, Harold Mateo, 1118 Water Street, Fitchburg, Mass.
Thank you. We are here to review the special permit. The special permit was granted to you on March 12th, at the March 12th meeting of 2024.
Yes.
And you have been, I believe, the owner of this property for a while, but there have been several other special permit holders that have conducted this business at the location. And at your request at the last, at this meeting, we did agree to grant a special permit to you as the property owner, meaning that if the ownership of the business changed, we would not need a new special permit, but that you, of course, remain responsible for the business.
Absolutely.
Okay. So can you tell us, in your own words, what, give us a little summary of how operations have been going since then?
Sure. Yeah, thank you. Good evening, everyone. First, I want, I want to thank you for all of the work we have done over the years, which has been quite a lot. I think I've been before you probably at least 10 times for different properties. And in this particular case, for 447 Water Street, I actually want to extend my apologies to you because we've had a couple of clients that have dropped off vehicles to us that have had things in the back of them. Some of it did not fit in their vehicle, so they put it to the side in the corner of our lot. And I understand that some members here, or I'm not quite sure who, went and took some pictures. I unfortunately was away on vacation the month of August. I've just returned. But I do want to assure you that we were going to clean that up, so I want to make sure I set that straight. Besides that, it had initially been a little difficult finding the right sort of help on the mechanical side. On the license to sell vehicles, we just got that not that long ago, so we're going to begin selling vehicles soon, and that's really it. It's been a little bit slower, vacation, summer, people are away. That's it.
So, of course, this is a main thoroughfare, so I think everybody on the board probably goes by it fairly often.
Mm-hmm.
And we've certainly been seeing a lot of vehicles in the parking lot. Was the business not open, and that was just storage? Or when did the business start operations?
I think we could say we probably have started operations about two months now. And I had initially had someone there. It didn't work out with them, so I closed it up for a little bit until I found somebody else. And that's, that's it for now. We hope to be selling cars soon.
Okay. Are you, is the business operating there your entity or another?
My entity.
Your entity?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. There was a boat stored there.
My boat.
Okay.
Yeah.
For a while.
I had to have it there because we had to pull it out of the water to fix some things. And in order to run the motors on the ground, you need a water connection, and I don't have that at my other storage. So that's, that's why it was there.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you did submit pictures showing that one of the conditions was addressed, which was the removal of the protruding signpost concrete and wires on the right-hand side of the building.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. And from your point of view, the work there is complete?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to go through the listed conditions and have you respond.
Okay.
On the status with the listed conditions. Some of them are just ongoing conditions.
Yep.
Some of them are to be satisfied or not satisfied. And this is actually, do we have that one? Oh, good. And that's the other one. Yeah. So the first condition is that the business is to be operated according to the submitted plan. And there are two plans, and one is designated A, and the other is designated B, and it's the B plan that was approved.
Yes, I'm actually glad you brought that up, because in the registered decisions that I had from before, from 2018, 2019, it was the other plan. So I haven't really put lines down because I wanted to come here and talk to you about that and figure out exactly, I mean, 2018, 2019, it was one plan. Now it's kind of like another plan, but it's really still me.
So in 2019, and that's when, the plan was dated June 9th, 2018. And from the kind of notation that I have on the version of this plan, it indicates that this was approved as the 2019 permit plan. There is an A version, and I think that because they're both on the same date, the same dated plan, both plans were presented, but it was the B version that was approved. There is, there is a big load of parking, and what I mean to say is there's a lot of parking spaces on the A plan.
Yeah.
Not so much on the B plan.
Yeah.
And that's, I think, indicative of what the board would approve, given, given the size of the lot.
So on, I don't really have that in front of me right now, but on the B plan, do you mind just holding that up for me one second?
If, I wish we had it on, in a way that I could put it up on the screen, but if...
I can just, from here is good.
So you're welcome to come approach and take a look at the two plans. It's not there.
Got it. Okay.
A is there, yeah. But in the decisions, that's the B, so that's the approved one.
Got it.
Yep.
B is approved?
Yes, B is approved, A is not approved.
Yeah, so... From the earlier version, at least, the license that were issued from the city clerk's office, the 2018, 2019 license documentation that I have, the PDF, allows us to sell eight cars. And with this one, it's only allowing us to sell five cars. I mean, we're a small shop. It kind of makes a little bit of a difference.
So, let's see. The special permit itself does not contain a specific limit on the number of cars.
Perfect.
But it is very specific about referring to the B plan and not the A plan.
Okay.
So your city permit, the dealership permit, is for eight cars?
That's what I had before, correct.
Do you...
I don't know what this, I haven't actually read it. We picked up the license, but we have not started that, we have not engaged in that business yet.
I'm going to take a moment and, let me see, when I finish going through the conditions, I'm going to take a moment and see if it's available to me from here.
Okay.
It might not be.
That's fine. I might, I might have a copy scanned in my computer.
So the second condition is no plastic or vinyl banners, professional signage only. I don't think I've seen the, any plastic or vinyl banners up. No exterior storage of junk or motor vehicle parts, and no inoperable or dismantled vehicles to be stored outside of the building. So that's the one I think we'll, we're going to have some questions on.
Sure, we'll touch on that.
No parking on the sidewalk or street. That, you know, goes along with compliance with the parking plan.
Yeah.
Hours of operation Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 7:30, and Saturday, 9 to 3, closed on Sunday.
Correct.
That's still the hours of operation?
Still fine, yeah.
Okay. Not to be operated as a public nuisance is an ongoing condition. Property owner to remove protruding signposts, we just talked about that. Parking to be striped according to the submitted plan 7406-B, so that's, striping still has to be done.
That's the B plan?
That's, yeah.
Okay.
So both that and the first condition refer to the B plan.
Got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, understood.
And we have a sunset clause, which means that ownership of the property would remain with Clearwater Real Estate Investments and Harold Mateo. Is that still the case?
Yes.
Okay. And have you transferred more than 20% of the ownership interests in Clearwater Real Estate Investments LLC?
I have not.
Okay. All right, that's all the conditions.
Yep.
So I am going to give you just some of the pictures of the, it's the junk and outside storage. So what we have here is a couple of swiss food barrels.
Actually, if I may speak to that, if I may?
So you, you absolutely may.
The pictures or no?
I'm going to go through the pictures briefly, and then I'm going to go back to you.
Sure.
Okay. There was a truck that had all of the junk stored in the back of the pickup truck. And I think there's in here a couple of pictures of that truck. The truck also seems to be inoperable.
That's a different truck.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then there's some outside storage here.
Those are the parts for the inoperable truck.
The parts. And then I think that is all of the pictures, and of course, the striping hasn't been done yet.
Correct.
So you're welcome to take the pictures and...
I saw them.
Okay.
Yep.
Go ahead, so...
So I, I just want to make sure that I help at least clarify a couple of things. We are, you know, a dealership and auto repair. If a car breaks down and they tow it and they bring it to our place, it may not work, and our job is to fix it, right? So not always will we get a car in the door that is moving or in movable condition. That makes sense for a garage auto repair. In this particular case, the two vehicles were kind of helping someone who works, who couldn't afford paying $20,000 at a dealership, to put that truck back together for them. That's why that's there. And then the other one that was to the left, the black truck, that is actually, that is a client's vehicle that has his stuff in there. Those aren't my things. So that's why they're in the back of the truck. The two tanks that you saw, we pay $150 for the, for the company to come, pick them up, empty them out, and bring them back. Those were empty, so they go inside of the garage. They were just there.
Okay, so normally those tanks are going to be stored inside the garage?
Correct, inside, correct. On the left-hand side.
So I will say, when I looked at that vehicle, it looks like somebody's using it as an alternative to having a dumpster for disposal? That's what it looks like?
The one with the dump truck or?
With all of the...
Oh, the black one, yeah. It's, I don't, I mean, I'm just, we're just fixing it, right? It needs, it's a diesel truck, and it needs lifters done, so...
And then, you know, this, but the dumpster is what, what these things are for.
Yes, so...
You know, that's where they should go.
But that's not trash, what you're seeing there. Those, those are parts for that truck that's in front of it.
Right, but one of the conditions of the special permit is that there be no outside storage of parts.
Yes, we should have probably put it in the back of the bed of that truck because it has a dump bed. We should have put it there, so my apologies for that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, I, I agree with you that we have this line that we try to walk between inoperable vehicles, the fact that that's what you're there to repair, right? And having a junk vehicle, right? Which is, very frankly, storage of junk vehicles, storage of vehicles for parts, which I think falls under the same category. It's a different use.
Yeah.
Under the use table.
Agreed totally.
And it's not allowed in that district at all.
Totally agree, and that's not what I'm in the business of. I don't do junk cars, so we're fixing those.
Yeah, that's a, or a salvage yard.
Yeah, that's not me.
That would fall under there.
And I have no intention. While I may have other people around me that have that, we do not operate in that manner.
Would love to be...
Which is why I extended my apologies for even it looking that way, because I don't like that either.
And so, the board's view generally on this issue of where do we cross the line? You know, if it's sitting there for a long time, and I would certainly, you know, look at 60 days as a long time. If it is not registered and not plated, if it is not being actively marketed for sale...
Yep.
I think then we've crossed the line into a salvage junk or parts vehicle.
That's good to know, thank you.
So, and I, one of the things that I think this board will be addressing in the future is kind of putting forth some rules, so they're set out for everybody to see, and addressing that definition is one of the issues.
Absolutely.
That we need to, to clarify. I'm going to turn to other board members. I'm going to ask whether anybody here wishes to make a comment or ask a question on this Seeing none, and I don't believe, if anyone online wishes to participate, please raise your hand. I don't see any.
To clear up the question that Harold asked about who took the pictures, it was Mike and I.
Oh, yeah. And Mr. Byrne was just letting me know that he and Mr. McLaughlin had taken the pictures. That's...
Wish I would have been there, guys, when you stopped by. Sorry, sorry, I was away.
So, Mr. Byrne, I'm going to go to you and ask if you have any comment or question for the...
No, he cleared up, he cleared up the questions that I would have had.
Okay. Mr. Talbot?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay. Mr. Gallagher?
I'm all set. Thank you, Kristi.
Mr. Reynolds, any comment for this applicant?
No, thank you.
Okay, permit holder, not applicant. Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Mateo, just, you know, would hope that by the next review period, that all this gets cleaned up, because the majority of everything, and I'm going to give you the benefit of doubt, you just get the business going, but, you know, it's a gateway, the street, and...
I agree.
I know you want to be successful, you want to sell cars, but, you know, it was a little bit of an eye-opener for us when we visited the property, that there were quite a few unregistered vehicles, and a lot of the parts that were in the vehicles were just junk auto parts that appeared to have been...
Yeah.
Parts that, you know, mufflers that had been replaced, radiators that had been replaced, and things like that, so...
Those were the parts for the truck, but I, I will, I appreciate your feedback. I would encourage you to come back in 30 days or less, and that will all be gone.
We want you to be successful. Just to keep in mind, the city ordinance requires that a car lot have 10,000 square feet.
Mm-hmm.
And this lot is half the size, so it's been pre-existing, non-conforming, and I know it's going to, I know that you've expressed that, geez, I can't put a lot of cars on there. We know it's going to be a little difficult for you, especially where you've got a dual purpose going on with auto repair and auto resale, so...
Yes.
You know, we just, we want it to work according to plan, and, you know, hope I missed this trip.
Thank you.
This is a good visit.
Thank you. I hope it is too, and I do hope you continue to make it easier for us to do business in Fitchburg, primarily on Water Street. I own about three other properties on Water Street, so I'm really invested on Water Street. So thank you, and thank you for helping us get through what I would consider was a very difficult phase after being closed for almost eight months. Thanks.
Yeah, it is always different. It's difficult on both landlord and tenant, but definitely on both sides, resolving that is, is hard. So up on the screen, you see the B plan. The, I have not been able to immediately locate the permit with the number of vehicles.
I can forward that, yeah.
And so there are nine spaces on this plan. And so we, we have a condition that the parking's to be striped. We did not put a time limit on you.
Yeah.
What do you think is the time limit for striping to be completed?
Before winter gets here is fine. I first wanted to confirm which parking plan we were going to go with, and, and then the possibility of maybe changing that up somehow, somewhat, to have at least one more of those. Where number four is making that a D so that we can at least be able to sell, you know, six vehicles, or taking away one of the Es because there's really not two employees. So I need the ability to be able to sell more cars to, to make it sustainable.
It's part of the problem with the small lot.
Yeah, so, that, that understood, but based on what I'm seeing and the traffic that we're seeing, one, either three or four being a D would work, and one and two being a D would also work for us, and that would give us back the A that we need.
Okay, so switching the designation but not changing the number?
Correct. I'm okay with the plan.
All right.
We can make that work. I'm okay with that. And in fact, that's what we've done when it comes to like snow storage and cleaning it up, so that's perfectly fine.
I know there's no snow outside right now, but that, that snow storage corner has been like completely parked on.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And the traffic in and out of this lot is, is of course, one of the...
We haven't had any issues coming in and out of it, thankfully.
Yeah. So, so I think you're proposing a modification to the special permit because we're modifying the plan?
We're going to keep the same parking plan. I'm just asking to have a couple of the, a number four, and maybe number two, so that they can be vehicles that we can sell.
Okay, so that does mean only one customer would be able to park on the lot?
Correct. We don't have a lot of people coming in and out.
Okay.
What about vehicles being dropped off for repair?
The tow, if it's by tow truck, they normally, where you see numbers nine, eight, and seven, they just kind of pull in there and drop them off. And if it's a customer, the same thing, they would come between number two and number three and drop them off. Yeah. And then they just go and come back after.
Yeah, and is it a one-bay or a two-bay building?
Two bays.
Two bays, okay. You do have obviously the ability to keep cars that you're servicing inside there.
Correct.
Any board member have a comment on the proposal to modify the plan to permit? I think if it's going to be converted from an employee to a vehicle for sale, it would be number one, because I don't know how the employee would get into number one if there was a vehicle parked in number two.
That's fine, yeah, that's okay.
And then your other proposal is that number four be converted to a vehicle slot for, for sale. Anyone have a comment on that?
If you put in the number of employees, where they need to park, and a customer visit, we're kind of out of space, that's what I'm concerned about.
One more time?
Yeah.
Hang here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I said that if you allow for parking spots for your employees, and maybe one customer repair vehicle, you're kind of already out of spots to accommodate the number of vehicles.
Well, we have two, two more additional parking spots inside, and in fact, when it's wintertime, we could put four inside with the lifts up and one underneath. Yeah.
I'm only concerned because every time I go by the property, it's completely full of vehicles.
Yeah, in fact, people don't even like parking how three and four are. They like parking parallel to the building. But I'm happy to draw the lines however you, you feel is appropriate.
So they prefer to park in five or six, or they prefer to pull up front?
They pull up front, so where number eight and nine are, just imagine that being in front of where it says "office."
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm sure once the striping is done, they'll, their behavior will change a little bit.
Yeah.
So, I do want to just look at our requirement, parking requirement under the ordinance.
Sure.
So you are designated as both sales and repairs, and so the required parking for repairs is two spaces per service bay. So that would mean four spaces. And then one parking per 500 square feet of gross floor area, or one per 15 sales cars. So that would be one customers per, and you're under the...
We don't, yeah.
And I don't know that your building is much more than 500 square feet in gross floor area, yeah.
No.
But you also don't have any, use the building for display of vehicles for sale?
Inside, no, never.
Yeah, inside. Right.
Recommendation, Madam Chair?
Absolutely.
Two months' continuance, give the applicant a chance to stripe the property and use as planned submitted, and then further discussion in two months will reverse to changes.
Okay. Can you have the striping done by the November meeting?
Yeah, I don't see why not. That shouldn't be a problem. My, my only concern is if we're going to stripe and then, then it changes, then I got to pay again to cover up the striping, you know?
So if you are looking at just changing the way the spaces are used, then you're not going to change the striping, because it's, the spaces aren't going to move, we're just going to change how they are used. If you would like to relocate the spaces, then we'd need a new plan.
I'm okay with just, that's fine. I mean, I think we'll be fine.
So, and, and I think that once the board has put the, recognizes you've striped, the board is not going to require you to move the stripes, so...
No, no, that's, that's perfectly fine. Thank you.
Okay. So the November meeting, oh, thank you. I'm already looking at the 2025 one.
Scary.
It is. So November 12th is the November meeting date on Tuesday, and so I'd be looking, and I really, I kind of want to stop the reviews, so I want to get to the point of completion and then not have any more reviews.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so the motion would be for a continuance of the review to November the 12th, requesting completion on... completion on conditions one, three, and eight, which is the striping, junk, and operations according to plan.
Yep.
And if you do wanna request a modified plan rather than striping this plan, I'd ask that you present a plan and have it ready for us to look at before that November meeting.
Okay.
Okay? It's not part of the motion, though.
Got it, got it.
Can I have that, could someone make that motion?
I'll make that motion under ZBA 23-39 with the changes as noted by the Chair.
Okay. And do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any comment on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Mr. Reynolds, if I don't have to take your vote on a matter, I'm not going to ask for it, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. All right, so we are continued to November. Good luck with everything.
Thank you.
And we'll see you then.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your time, Board.
Have a good evening.
All right. I am going to call the next matter, which is 59 to 63 Wayland Street, ZBA 24-9. This is a review of a variance that was granted under the Fitchburg zoning ordinance to erect an accessory three thousand square foot storage space on the same lot, not connected to the existing building located in the neighborhood business district. This is Amico Realty. Is anyone here for the permit holder? Do we have any communication from the permit holder? Okay. Is anyone present at the meeting like to make a comment on this variance review? Anybody online like to make a comment on this matter? Any board member like to make a comment on this matter?
As you drive by, it looks completed.
Okay.
Mary Mike?
Hmm?
When you drive by, it looks like it's completed. Building is up. Am I talking to the right one?
Um, to me.
No, 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 what I'm talking about. I'm talking about Gleason, not this.
Yeah. I, I was gonna say, to me, it's looks like.
This one, this one hasn't started yet.
Yeah, the work hasn't started yet.
Misspoke.
Mr. Commissioner, do you have any information on the Amico Realty Wayland Street? That's the construction of the accessory.
Isn't started yet.
Let me just finish pulling it up. I apologize.
Sure. Any other board member down there have a comment?
Just make a motion to kick it out three months, because it doesn't appear they've, I'm sure they have typical construction delays.
So, that would take us to the December meeting?
So, Madam Chair, they have not applied for any building permits or anything yet.
Okay. Then, to Ms. Motta, please request of the applicant that he communicate with us one way or the other prior to the next review meeting. And I would entertation, a motion on continuance of this matter.
Make a motion in ZBA 24-9 for Amico Realty, property of 59 to 63 Wayland Street for continuance for December 10th, 2024.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Matter is continued till December 10th, 2024. Our next matter is ZBA 2023-18. That is Zero Airport Road, William Gleason. Review of a variance to construct a 24 by 50 steel building on a 7,959 square foot lot, not conforming to the side yard setbacks located in the industrial district. Welcome, sir, to the meeting.
Aye, hello.
Can you please state your name and city of residence for the minutes?
William Gleason, Fitchburg, Mass.
Welcome to the meeting, Mr. Gleason.
Thank you.
I just want to tell you, that is another road that's frequently traveled by most of the board and going by. You know, I just want to say it looks like you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Can you give us a summary of where you are in the project?
Uh, it'll be completed in two weeks. I have a sign left. I had a sign that was up, but when I went to put it back up, I realized it was too damaged. And plus, my website is different on it. And the new one's in tomorrow. I'm gonna put that up. And I just have a flagpole to put up and a little bit of landscaping around those two things. And that's it.
Okay. I was going to say, I know that there's a site plan that you need to comply with, and I believe the landscaping is part of that.
Yep.
And that hasn't been done yet, right?
Oh, the landscaping is done.
The, the site plan review that was done way back in 2011 or 12. Yep. There's a requirement for some landscaping to be installed on the exterior of the fence, between the fence and the street. And I, I think it's just, you know, having some trees and bushes in, in place. Might be able to put it up, yep, for you.
It's fully planted.
It's fully planted?
There's sod down.
Okay.
Shrubs.
Maybe I went by before that got installed.
Well, how long have you been by?
About a week.
No, I've been up for longer than that.
So, you did have plantings required along the street frontage. There was a requirement that DPW approve of the plantings. Vinyl coated chain link fence to be installed. Oh, I'm, Mr. Gleason, I apologize. I have the last applicant's site plan review up.
All right.
That's nice.
Can I say, because my fence is up. It's fully landscaped. And it is black vinyl.
Looks good.
Thank you.
All right. I'm gonna go through the conditions in our special permit. And you can let me know whether you're compliant working on it or not compliant. First condition, just again, first condition is that the side yard setback shall be no less than seven and a half feet on either side of the constructed building. No other dimensional variances are granted. So, were you able to comply with the seven and a half foot setback?
Two and an inch.
Great. The building shall be constructed substantially according to the plan submitted by Haley Ward dated April 3rd, 2023. Did you have to deviate from the plan at all? Okay. Then we have the conditions of the Planning Board Incorporated, which I'm gonna let other board members speak to you, and then I'm gonna look for the right site plan, and we'll talk about that. Petitioner shall install the landscaping as required in the site plan on the perimeter or on, on the, or before the review date. The chain link fence to be of solid color and not bare metal. Okay. Property is to be kept clean and orderly. Condition is viewed from the road with no vehicle or equipment parts, construction debris. I think you're nearing the end of construction at this point. Site to be kept clean during construction, and then our review date. Okay. So, I am going to ask if anybody else here would like to make a comment on this matter? Anybody virtually would like to make a comment on this matter? Seeing none in either case, I'm going to let our board members ask any questions while I look for that site plan. Mr. Byrne, any?
No, I have no questions. It's just the property that I said looks like it was completed.
Mm-hmm. That is this one. Mr. Talbot, any questions or comments?
I drove by today. It looks really good.
Thank you.
Mr. Commissioner, I see your hand up. Please go ahead.
Madam Chair, so the condition, condition number one, side yard setback shall be no less than seven and a half feet on either side of the constructed building. No other dimensional variances. So, the, just so that you know, we do have a as-built that's sealed by a land surveyor that says 7.5 plus or minus. So, I'd ask maybe to remove the plus or minus, just to make it very clear, that, that it's the 7.5, so that it shows compliance. I don't think that should be an extra cost to the, to the applicant, because that's something the surveyor shouldn't have had on there to begin with. But I want to let you know that the applicant did get us a sealed as-built, and it does show 7.5, plus or minus.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. That's the benefit of having the as-built plan. You've got that certified. Mr. Gallagher, any questions or comments?
Uh, no questions, but the site looks great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice job.
Mr. McLaughlin, any questions or comments?
No, only comment is that, you know, as long as the planning board conditions are satisfied, I think he's in the end zone.
All right. And then, Mr. Reynolds, do you have any questions or comments?
Nope. I think the applicant's done a nice job. Thank you.
Great. Mr. Gleason, I have, oh, there we go. I was going to say, we have plenty of planning of ZBA materials, but not the planning board ones I am looking for. So, the planning board was to add a stone and brick surface at the driveway, that there was an existing six foot high chain link fence. And this is what I'm thinking of. You will add arborite screening at the perimeter of the lot, and the property will be gated. And that was the plan back in 2011. So, it, do you have arborite planted?
It wouldn't work out there after I, it was built.
I'm sorry?
It wouldn't work out with arborites. It would take over. I planted, have you been by, oh, you haven't bought, a bunch of shrubs and sod.
Mm-hmm.
The arborites would have taken over the whole property. They get massive.
It always depends on the type of arborite that you get, right? Yeah. If you put in an emerald green giant, it certainly would. Can you tell me?
Deer, deer in that area, and deer eat everything but the green giant.
Deer certainly are very fond of the arborite. What type of shrubs? Were they evergreen, or were they not evergreen?
Evergreen.
Okay. I personally don't have a problem with the switch, as long as it's representative of the same intent. Anybody else have an issue with that?
I'd rather see, you know, scale in the building than to see massive arborites in front.
I love arborites, just not there. That was a bad decision on my part, too, bringing that up. You don't realize how small that property is.
So, I, I, you know, I will say that with that one modification on the as-built plan, it seems to me like you're at the point of completion. I think the building is well situated, and I hope that it serves your business purposes better than the gate did prior to that.
Thank you.
Does, without further comment, I'm gonna look for a motion on approval of the review.
Make the motion on ZBA 2023-18 to approve the review.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Mr. Gleason, good luck with the property and with your business.
Thank you. I have one more thing.
Sure.
I don't know what happened, but there is an address for it now.
Oh, great. What is the?
192.
192?
Don't ask me how.
I don't know why.
Mercedes, do you know? How I got that?
The engineers, the engineering department assigns it.
Oh, all right.
Okay. So, you will now be known as number 192 Airport Road. And Mercedes, I'm just asking, we received a recorded copy of the decision, right?
Yes.
Okay. I'm asking if the recording was done at the registry of deeds.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Aye.
The next item up for review is ZBA 2022-31. This is 56 Cully Street. Yel Dario Recio. My apologies for any mispronunciation of your name. This is a review of the special permit under section 181.313 of the zoning ordinance to open a motor vehicle paint and body shop located in neighborhood business district. Welcome to the meeting, sir. Mr. Mateo, I will recognize, is here again, and has already stated his name and address for us. If you can do the same, please.
Yel Dario Recio, Affidice Cully Street.
Okay, thank you. So, you are here on a review of your special permit. And I'm seeing that we have the final inspection report?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I know that one of the outstanding items was, thank you, the building and fire inspections that needed to be done. So, I see that the building inspection has been deemed completed. I, I have to keep it if I take it.
Yes, it's for you guys.
So, that was completed at the first of July. Do you believe that you're ready to open the business and operate?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Very good.
Yes, yes.
Long road, huh?
Should be excited, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody.
I have been given a picture of the side parking lot with the dumpster placed, and I think that there had been some outside debris stored that's been removed.
That's right.
I'm gonna pass this around to the other board members to take a look as well. So, yeah, this one. So, at the last meeting, the outstanding condition was the inspections from building and fire for the spray booth prior to.
Lady.
Has fire also been completed?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Commissioner, confirming. Thank you. I am gonna say that when I went to look, number one, the back hill is clean?
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I, I hope the butters do not repeat their actions of throwing trash down the hill. Please call the board of health if they do. Okay?
Okay.
The parking lot was paved and striped. And I, I looked back at the plan that was approved. It was for five spaces. They were three and then two, and you have paved it and striped it, all five on one side. I don't really have an objection to that, but I'm gonna ask if any other board member does. There are five spaces. I think the entrance into the spaces is adequate. At the last meeting, I believe all of the other conditions were deemed satisfied, other than that. So, I am going to see if there's anybody present who wishes to make a comment on this matter. Is there any person virtually who would like to make a comment on this matter? Seeing none, Mr. Reynolds, I'm going to go to you first. Any comment?
Uh, no comment. Happy, no questions, just comment would be happy with the current progress.
Okay. Mr. Byrne?
I have to compliment this fellow. From the time he purchased the building until now, it has increased its value 100% just by the eye appeal and curb appeal that you get from driving down the street. I also want to compliment him for getting up on that hill behind his building and cleaning it off. I know it was tough to get up there. And again, like the Chair, I hope those people respect your property and stop throwing stuff from the porches onto your property. But I do want to thank you for coming into the city, and it's nice to have you ready to start business.
Right, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay. Mr. Talbot?
No comments.
Mr. Gallagher?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. A lot of good effort put in over the time that you've been working on it, and.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
I definitely recognize that, so.
Thank you, sir.
I want to wish you a lot of luck.
Thank you.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah, it's been a long road, huh?
Yeah.
Glad to see you there. Hope that you're an example for a good, clean business. Hope that you're an example for a good, clean business, because we know that your surroundings are a little challenging. So thank you for a good example.
Thank you, sir.
And we wish you success.
Thank you.
Thank you, Harold.
Okay. So remember, there are some conditions that are continuing. And similar to the other business, not to be operated as a private or public nuisance. No vinyl banners. No offensive fumes or odors. No outside storage of parts. Any unregistered cars to remain on the property no longer than two months, which is our little attempt to define what that means. So remember that those conditions continue, and if they are violated, the board can call you back.
Madam Chair, I think that we don't have a review.
Is that great?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Commissioner, you have a comment?
I have more of a question for the chair. This is the last step before I can issue a certificate of occupancy.
Yes.
So if the, so I just made a condition on the certificate of occupancy that it must comply with the special permit conditions. Is it okay, after the board votes, that I issue that certificate of occupancy so that, so that Mr. Recio can walk out of here? No, he can log on online and print that out?
I have no objection, and I don't think the board does either, so yes, thank you. That'll be great and very efficient.
He appreciates it. Thanks so much.
All right. I'm looking for a motion on approval of the review.
I'll make the motion under ZBA twenty twenty-two dash thirty-one for Yale Recio for the property of fifty-six Cully Street to approve the review.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None? We're, we're approved. You'll get your certificate of occupancy.
Thank you, guys.
Very good luck with the business.
All right, thanks.
Our next matter is ZBA twenty-three dash twenty-one. Twenty-three dash twenty-one on ten thirty-three Main Street. This is Jose Francisco Bueno. This is a review of the special permit under section one eighty-one point three one-three D twelve of the zoning ordinance to continue the use of the property as an auto repair shop located in the Downtown Business District. Welcome to the meeting.
Good afternoon.
Can you each please give me your name and city of residence for the minutes?
Yeah, it's Jose Francisco, and I live in Pittsburgh.
Catherine Mejia Clinton.
And are you in Pittsburgh as well?
Clinton.
Okay. Thank you. So, welcome to our meeting. You are here on a review of your, of your special permit. And my first question is whether you are up and open for operation yet?
Yes.
Okay. How long have you been operating?
We did a soft opening beginning of August, first week of August. And I ended up moving in there yesterday, so.
Okay. Very good. So you have your dealer's approval?
Sorry, what was that?
You have your dealer's?
It's auto repair.
Auto repair, yeah.
I am sorry.
That's all right.
You have all of the other licenses and permits that you require to operate the business?
So far, yeah.
Okay. We had noted some outstanding issues, and I know that we had a little bit of delay on, on completion. But at the last meeting, this is what was noted as incomplete. Number six, in-and-out directional markers shall be painted on the pavement to indicate traffic movement in a one-way direction. And would you say that's completed or not?
Yes, I have the pictures also.
Oh, that was great. If you could bring.
Sorry, it's not in color, but.
Oh, that's okay. As long as we can see that there's a marker. Right? Thank you. And again, I have to keep them if I take them. So I'm going to take a look and then pass them around the board. So we have a picture of the fence erected. We have a picture of a no parking being indicated on the asphalt. And we have a directional marker painted on the asphalt, and another directional marker. I'm going to pass these around to the board.
Okay.
You're good? Pass them that way. So the next condition is that you replace the vinyl fence on the left of the property. That's been completed?
Yep.
Okay? And you'll repair or replace the existing sign pole in base servicing the premises?
Yes.
Completed?
It's also done, yeah.
I did see the sign up and erected, so. Just to review the remainder of the conditions, no handmade signs or banners, professional signage only. No vehicles for sale, no unregistered vehicles on the premises, and no storage of vehicles other than active customers and employees. Auto repairs to be performed within the building only. No outside storage or display of tires or vehicle parts. Property shall be kept clear of trash and debris. Dumpster positioned on the right rear of the property. We just went through six, seven, and nine. I believe you had already removed the pole with the rims and chains on it and installed a fence on the right-hand side of the property up to the end of the parking spaces to prevent parking on the sidewalk.
Yeah, that's.
That was done. Building to be painted in a neutral color coordinated with the fencing, and that, again, I think has been long done. Not to be operated as a public or private nuisance. That is a continuing condition, so don't be a nuisance. And your hours of operation, Monday to Friday, eight to five, Saturday, eight to one. No Sundays. Still the case? Okay. And the business is still in your name, sir, or in the name of Midnight Auto Repair, Inc.?
Well, I mean, it should be both.
Both?
Yeah.
Okay. So just remember that if that changes, the permit sunsets, so that any new owner of, or operator of business would need to
You'll have to redo it, yeah.
get a new special permit.
Okay.
Okay. Is any person present interested in making a comment or asking a question on this matter? Is any person online who wishes to make a comment on this matter? Seeing none in either case, Mr. Commissioner, any comments?
So a certificate of occupancy was issued already on this in February. And there's a condition on there that says it must comply with the conditions of ZBA special permit, ZBA twenty-three dash twenty-one. So there really isn't anything from us beyond that.
This was not a case where we had held this certificate of occupancy?
Correct.
But of course, it should always be a condition that they continue to comply with conditions. So thank you for that. All right. Any board member have a question or want to make a comment on this matter? Okay. Mr. Talbot?
No.
Okay. Sorry. I misinterpreted your hand signal. Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jose, you have the dumpster in the back, right? And then you got some cars behind the dumpster?
Right now, that, we had to pull that out so he could empty it. But the minute he does, it's going right back behind the cars.
Cars will be in front of the dumpster. Yeah. I just wanted to point out one of the conditions that auto repair's got to be done in the building.
Yeah.
And I think one of the cars is out there jacked up.
Yeah, they dropped it off like that at the tow truck driver. It doesn't run right now, so we just have to put it back down.
Okay. Are both of those cars registered?
The black one is, it's a customer's. I'm not sure if he has it registered or not. And the gold one's mine. It's not.
Okay, okay. You know, just be conscious that the, the, all the vehicles coming in and out should be, you know, registered and not inoperable vehicles.
I have a question on that. So I do business with John Brunel and Brick. All of their cars aren't registered. Is that a problem, or how do we go about that? I'm not really, like, if it's a car for sale that they have for sale?
Yeah. I mean, I think that's unique. They're probably driving it over with a plate.
Dealer plate, yeah.
So, you know, again, it's not black and white. You know, there are some gray areas, right?
Yeah.
If you are servicing dealerships. But, you know, again, we're just trying to prevent inoperable junk vehicles from sitting on properties, you know?
No, I get it. I get it.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
But, yeah, you know, if you're doing work for dealerships, they're going to bring a car and take their plate with them, but.
Yeah.
You know, we assume if somebody's bringing you a car for, for service, that generally it's in really good condition.
Exactly.
It's just there to have some basic work done so it can be
Exactly, yeah.
ready for sale. Looks good, though. Thank you. I appreciate your job.
Thank you. Thank you. A lot of work, but, thank you.
Yeah.
I agree. The place looks nice. It's a vast improvement from when you took over ownership and operation of the business.
Thank you.
So congratulations to both of you on all the work that I know you both did.
Thank you very much.
On that.
The best it's looked in many years.
I appreciate that.
And, and just let me reassure you, the board does not wish to be pedantic or, or get you on little technicalities like you're working on an unregistered vehicle. It's, it's the long-term junk vehicles outside. That's what we want to prevent.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I'm sure that's not what's going on over there, so.
No, that, that parking is too small for that, so. I, the cars that are there, I want to get them in and out. I get tired of looking at them, too, so.
If it's neat and clean, they will come.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Okay. I have assumed, Mercedes, that we have had no city department comments on any of the matters that have yet come before us. Let me know when we get there. All right. Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Yeah, I got one more last question. That building has like a little separate office. It's got its own bathroom, its own entry and everything. What can I do with that? Can I rent it to somebody that needs a space to storage their stuff, or?
Well.
It used to be a dealer back, I don't know how far back, but I think they sold cars out of there. I'm not really sure.
You are in the Downtown Business District, which is, as I've looked at it, very permissive about businesses operating there. So the thing to do, if anybody has a question like this, number one, look at the zoning ordinance in the table of uses, which I'm pulling out right now.
Okay.
But also, you know, give a call to the Building Department, who are glad to help you with that.
Thank you.
The other thing that you can do is look to the Economic Development Department, who should also be helping businesses, especially small businesses, open and be successful. So this is a, never find what I want on the table of uses when I want it. Business or professional office. And if you're in the Downtown Business District, this is a use that is allowed by right. Another question is whether there's enough parking on the site or any other building requirements that might need to be vetted. But from a zoning perspective, the use is allowed by right. Go ahead, Mr. Commissioner.
So, Madam Chair, one kind of corollary to that is I'm not allowed to tell you, like, give you ideas on what you can do. You're allowed to present ideas to me, and I can say yes or no.
Gotcha.
Answer questions, but as a zoning enforcement officer, I can't tell you, kind of give you ideas on what.
Gotcha.
Or reading the book and talking to the Economic Development Director is helpful. But to address the parking question, I believe in the downtown business and in-town business, commercial uses have no parking requirement.
I believe you're right, Mr. Commissioner, which means we wouldn't need to worry about whether you have enough parking on the lot, so. But the way to verify that is to, you know, request review from the Building Department, and they will give you the answer.
Okay. Thank you.
And good luck with your business, sir.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Comment?
Go ahead.
Only in that we've accepted a plan for the business with specific parking spaces. So that could impact either business, correct?
Not if there's no parking required.
So if, if it's like an office space or a professional office or something, there's no additional parking requirement for it. He is required for this business to have these spots that are earmarked for this business.
Gotcha.
As part of his special permit.
I don't know what I'm, what I'm going to do.
For that other little office space or something. If you brought someone else in there, it's no specific parking requirement for that. So on-street parking or such, but we wouldn't require additional parking. But he would have to have this earmarked for these.
Great. Thank you.
And we'd be clear of the issue of two principal uses on the same lot in the same building, right?
It's a multi-use building.
Yeah, that's what I thought. All right.
One last, one last question. On the permit that I had gotten before, it had the last owner's name. Is that something that we have to address now, or?
So that is because we have to list the owner according to the assessor records.
Okay.
And by state law, the assessor records are only allowed to be updated once a year. So that's how you get, that's why it says the last owner's name on it. There's no way for us to change that right now until the assessor updates their database, and then we can reissue it
Gotcha.
with the correct owner name.
Now, that wouldn't bring me any issues or anything?
With the special permit, no. It's a known issue, and it's because of the state law.
Gotcha, okay. Perfect. I think we're good.
All right. I'm going to look for a motion on approval of the review, please.
I'll make a motion under ZBA twenty-three dash twenty-one for Jose Bueno for ten thirty-three Main Street to approve the review.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? None? So your review is approved, which means you've completed all the conditions. You can continue to operate the business. You are always subject to recall for a review of the conditions if the conditions are violated.
Gotcha.
But good luck with your business. I hope all goes well for you both.
Awesome. Thank you so much, yeah.
Have a good evening.
All right. The next matter is ZBA twenty-four dash twenty. This is twenty-six Bernab Street, Sherri Moyen. This is the review of the special permit to erect a farmer's porch to the front and side of a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling encroaching on the front yard setback from seventeen feet plus or minus, leaving approximately ten feet in a minimum required thirty-foot setback located in the Residential Aid District. All right. Ms. Moyen?
Good evening.
Good evening. Can you just, again, for the minutes, repeat your name and city of residence?
Sherri Moyen, Pittsburgh, Mass.
Okay. Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you.
So you are here for a review of this special permit, which I believe was only granted at the June meeting.
Yes.
So I think that I asked you at that meeting if you really wanted the September review, and you were going to be able to get it done by then.
We're close, right?
You're close.
This, this meeting is for you to tell me that, so.
Yeah, so.
So give us a summary of where you are.
Okay. So I ended up hiring a different contractor. He came in, he's worked with the commissioner, made some changes to the layout, and he's just recently asked for a final review.
Okay.
Inspection.
So we have here that the inspection was completed on August twenty-third?
That must be the.
Framing.
The foundation.
The framing.
The foundation framing.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you. Is there an inspection scheduled on the?
Not yet, right. I think he just asked for it at one o'clock today, so.
Yeah, the inspector was out. Mark Sullivan was out. Sorry for interrupting, Madam Chair.
It's okay, Mr. Commissioner. So the city clearly does not work that fast.
No, yeah. It's, it's definitely moving, though. It's been moving along. It's very close to the end. Very close.
So I am going to just review the conditions that we have as the special permit, and let me know whether these have been completed, are being worked on, or have not been complied with. So the front yard setback is reduced to ten feet for the construction of the covered front porch as depicted in the application. And we haven't, you've, you've stuck by the measurement, right?
Yes.
You haven't had to deviate?
Yes, we have.
The roof line on the front porch shall be in keeping with the style of the existing home?
Yes.
Okay. The porch shall not be enclosed and shall not be converted to interior space?
Yes.
Okay. And the applicant shall submit an as-built plan to the Building Department prior to receiving a certificate of completion.
So that'll be next, right, I believe?
Yep. You can call your surveyor out, because it takes lead time.
Oh, okay.
You should call them out now, because you have what they need. They need the framing so that they can figure out the corners of it and make sure you comply.
Okay.
All right. All right, anything else to say before I move on to comment?
No, I just appreciate the support of the board, thank you.
Is there any person present here today who wishes to make comment on this review? Is there any person virtually who wishes to make comment on this review? Seeing none, I'm going to move to board members. Mr. Byrne?
Michael and I were out there on Friday, we talked to the people who were constructing the porch and the patio. And it's a beautiful job, it looks absolutely great, the color is absolutely wonderful. The owner of the construction company talked to us over the phone and said that they would be completing and cleaning up the the leftover scraps of materials there on Saturday, and it would have been, they said they would be off the property by Monday. So, it looks like it should be completed.
Yeah, they've removed, I'd say like ninety-five percent, there's a little bit more for them to come back and remove, but they've removed most of it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Byrne.
Beautiful, nice job.
Mr. Talbot, any comment?
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Gallagher, any comment?
Other than, it, it's looking good, no comment.
Thank you.
Mr. Reynolds, any comments or questions?
No comment, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McLaughlin?
No ma'am, beautiful job.
Okay, and for myself, I did do my drive-by today. I, I think it's looking wonderful. And I, it looks to be in line with the plan that was submitted. I think you still have to install the landscaping in front because there's, you know, dirt, so I, I do encourage you to make sure that gets completed before the snow flies.
Yes.
But, uh, thank you for amending the issue that originally brought you before us. We appreciate that, as well as the good work you've done on the property to improve the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Is there any board member who would be inclined to bring this permit holder back for any further review? No? Okay. I am not inclined to do that either, you're so close to being done and I think everything that's important has been followed through with.
Thank you.
You still do have to submit the as-built plan before you get a certificate of completion.
Yes.
All right, I'd be looking for a motion on approval of this review.
So moved.
Any second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so. Your review is approved, you do not need to come back before us, and good luck with the property.
Thank you so much.
The next matter before us is ZBA 23-12, this is Mina Gobriel, 219 Highland Ave. This is a review of the special permit to reinstate the Variety Convenience Store in the existing pizza store, requesting a modification to hours of operation under the special permit located in the residential B district. And, Mr. Gobriel, I see that you are with us virtually. Sir? Are you there?
Hello?
Hello? Can you state your name and city of residence for the minute, please?
Okay, my name is Mina Gobriel, and, uh, the city of Ayr, Mass.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Gobriel, I understand your request to modify the oper- hours of operation for the pizzeria. I have a concern that I'm gonna resolve with the building commissioner right now as to why this is something that we need to approve. So, Mr. Gobriel?
Okay.
Have you opened the convenience store yet?
I'm working on it, so almost done, I just do step by step because I'm like, right now, I'm getting, I'm getting more busy. And then, um, try to find someone, as I said last time. And then I just saw, uh, uh, let Mercedes, she's a fa- visit me, and then I show her I'm working on it.
Okay, but, but you're not, it's not open yet?
Not yet, not yet.
Okay. So, Mr. Commissioner, this is my question to you. We issued the special permit for operation of the convenience store, not for operation of the pizzeria. He should not need to come before us to modify our hours of operation for the pizzeria because we do not set that. Because the special permit was for the convenience store, so my question is, does he need to be here?
So, the issue is that even though the, the special permit was for the convenience store, the conditions don't say that it's just for the convenience store, it just says no onsite service after eleven P.M.
Okay.
And since it follows the land, being conservative on that and thinking ahead for future precedents and for best practices, since it doesn't specify, that's why, because he wants to have this open until I think it's two o'clock in the morning or on certain days of the week, which I think there's definitely a need for a late-night service in that area. That I didn't want to be violating the, the intent of the board because I wasn't here for these conditions. And so, that's why, why they're here, because it doesn't say specifically, just as.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that. All right. Mr. Gobriel?
Yes?
When would you like to be open?
I just requested to open on Sunday, so I just to get time until, uh, for the convenience store, I get like, you give me, I think in November twenty-twenty-five? But I'm working on the convenient to be, uh, uh, open as soon, as soon as possible.
I'm sorry.
I don't wanna give specific time.
Mr. Gobriel, I'm not asking when you're gonna open the convenience store. You came to us because you wanted hours of operation, I believe, on Sunday, right?
Yeah, yeah, I just to try to open because I get a lot of requests from a, a lot of customer about Sundays. So that's why I'm, I'm requesting to open on Sunday.
And on Sunday, do you want to be open from eleven A.M. to nine P.M.?
Yes, please.
Okay, so you don't wanna be open later than that?
No, 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 Sunday, no.
All right.
Madam Chair, I confused it with a different one.
Oh, okay.
No, I'm not gonna open until two o'clock A.M.
Okay, thank you. So, I, I'm just gonna note that, I, I think, because you do have onsite service of beer and wine, right?
No, no, I'm not gonna serve beer and wine right now. Then I'm gonna skip it for now because, um, it's too tough to get like a license for that.
Okay.
Especially with the kids.
So you have hours and, and, and conditions that you would need to be in compliant with? That would mean that you couldn't be open late anyway, but.
No, no, okay, no.
The proposal is, is simply to operate the same way you've been operating, just do it on Sundays?
Yeah, it's gonna be like eleven to nine, like Sa- uh, I mean twelve, twelve to nine also, it's not eleven to nine, like Saturday. Go Saturday, twelve to nine.
Okay. I'm also gonna note, sir, that you still owe us the parking plan.
Yes, yes, yes.
I am gonna open this up for any comment and questions. Does, is there any member of the public here who would like to make a comment or ask a question on this matter? And, uh, Mr. Gobriel, you're the only person online, so that takes care of everybody's comments. Mr. Byrne, any comments or questions?
No, I think it's a, a good idea, it'll allow the students on the campus someplace to go on a Sunday afternoon or evening to get something to eat. So that's it.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Reynolds, any question or comment?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Talbot, any question or comment?
No, I, I agree, it'll be nice to have someplace open on Sunday over there.
Okay, thank you.
Other than that, no comments, thank you.
Mr. Gallagher, question or comment?
It's a good service to the campus and for the neighborhood, I think it's a good idea.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you.
It's a good service to all. We seem to be a little light on eating establishments that are open on Sunday, so I would be in favor of it. And just to further comment that maybe we put the review for the Variety Store out to April eighth of twenty-twenty-five, that's just prior to the permit expiring. And that way, he has some time to, to get things going.
I believe the file date was February, yeah, so I, I agree. All right, I, Mr. Gobriel, I also think it would be good if you could operate on Sundays in the manner that.
Thank you so much.
So, I, I'm gonna remind you that we do need that parking plan in order for you to start operations as a convenience store. So please keep your eye on that issue.
Okay.
I would be looking for a motion to continue the review and to modify condition five, hours of operation.
Okay, I'll make a motion under ZBA twenty-twenty-three-12 for Mina Gobriel. The property at two nineteen Highland Ave, um, to modify condition five as requested for hours of operation was at eleven A.M. to nine P.M. on Sunday. And to move the review for the special permit for the convenience store out to April eighth, twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? All right, Mr. Gobriel, you have your Sundays.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you so much, one more thing, please?
Yes.
One more thing. Just question, so are, are, I am able, because I'm got another request from, uh, the student around the campus. He asked me to open on Friday and Saturday later until eleven. So it's gonna be like eleven to eleven and extend eleven to nine. So I, I be able to open, or no?
Not under this particular permit, and I, now, we've already made the motion, sir. And generally, if you, it, it's good to ask for everything that you want upfront.
I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry.
That's what I was thinking, that it was the late nights on Fridays and Saturdays.
So Friday and Saturday, you want to remain open until eleven P.M.?
Eleven, yeah, eleven P.M., yeah.
Okay.
Only Friday and Sat- and that's it.
All right. Does any person have any further comment or question on that request? Okay. We have already taken a motion and vote, we are now gonna have to make reconsideration of that motion. A motion for reconsideration is going to have to be made by you, Mr. McLaughlin.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of reconsideration of the motion just voted?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed?
New motion.
Thank you.
ZBA twenty-twenty-three-12, Mina Gabriel, two nineteen Highland Ave, with the, um, conditions that I had originally stated in my previous motion. And also with the addition of hours of operation on Friday and Saturday until eleven P.M.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? All right, sir, your request is granted, and I look forward to your granting our request for a parking plan before the next review.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you and have a good night.
Oh, okay. Thank you, you too, so I'm, I'm ready to open?
Mr. Commissioner, do you need to do any more paperwork to do that?
No, he's ready to open.
All right, you're ready to open?
Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
All right. We have gotten through the, um, review portion of the evening, which is always excellent. We're now gonna call the first new matter for the meeting, that is ZBA twenty-four-23. This is David Frida, one twenty-five Exeter Street. This is a request for a special permit under section one eighty-one point three-three and one eighty-one point nine-four of the zoning code to build an addition behind the existing non-conforming detached garage eighteen by twenty-eight, which encroaches upon the side yard setback beyond the existing non-conforming structure, which is three point six. Leaving approximately three point three for a side foot setback, side setback, where a fifteen-foot side yard setback is required in the residential A district.
Yes.
Welcome to the meeting, sir, can you give your name and city of residence?
David Frida, Pittsburgh, Mass.
Okay. Can you tell me a little bit about what you would like to do, please?
I just wanna extend my garage straight back, I don't wanna put no driveway. I wanna keep the one garage door so I can store my cars in it. No plumbing, no electrical, just totally storage for my cars.
Okay. So you have a lot where we already have a very small setback for the neighbor. Can you tell us what's going along, going on along that boundary line between you and the neighbor?
Well, my, my non-existent garage is a small strip too, but from there to my neighbors is a fence, it's all fenced. And it's all just woods and terrible. And I wanna grade it up, plant a lawn, make it nice. And, you know, pretty much, that's it. I don't wanna have to put a new driveway in and, or nothing like that, or put a driveway from the other road, Heard Street. I just want it simple, open the door, pull my two cars in the back and have my garage open.
Is there a reason that you're not going wide instead of long?
Well, then I'd be on my lawn. And it'd be, I'd have to put another garage door in, I'd have to put another driveway in, now I'm encroaching in my backyard. And it's just, kinda makes no sense.
So you're able to ask for this relief because the garage is pre-existing non-conforming? And that means it's been there for longer than zoning is, or for longer than we required a fifteen-foot setback?
Right.
How long has the garage been there?
When I bought the house, there was an existing garage. And there was a tree that fell on it. So I pulled a permit to rebuild it. And I got the permit back in two thousand twelve, I believe it was, and I built the garage. Uh, which, at that time, they inspected the footing, foundation, everything was up to scale, three-foot foundation, footing, all nine yards. So I was able to build the garage.
But you built it in two thousand and twelve?
Yes.
All right, and so that would at the very least fall under the ten-year provision, whether or not it was allowed in the first place, if it's been there for ten years?
Oh, no, it's been there a long time, I, I don't know how long it's been there, I've been there sixteen years. And the garage was there when I bought the property. And it was an old garage, it was rundown, it was, it was unsafe.
Well, if a tree fell on it, it's usually not too usable. All right. We have certain questions that we have to answer when we look at the criteria for a special permit. And so I'm gonna ask you what your response is on these questions. And with, uh, this request to take something that's non-conforming and make it bigger, we have to find that it is not going to be substantially more detrimental than the existing garage to the neighborhood. So can you tell me why it would not be substantially more detrimental?
Well, it's all woods, no one can see it anyways except for two of my neighbors. And they got six-foot fences, and they're, they're just, they're okay with me doing it, I talk to them, they're great neighbors. And, um, I mean, that's.
So there's some fencing that provides screening to their backyard, so it's not an intrusion on their privacy?
Yeah, right, it'll be privacy for one of the neighbors. The other neighbor, he already has all the privacy from the other garage.
The other special permit criteria, I'm just gonna pull them out, they get a little wordy. Are there any social, economic, or community needs which are served by your proposal? Well, I would, it, so you're providing for your storage of cars, right? Is there going to be any effect on traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading?
No, no.
Okay. So you're still going to have the same entrance from, that you've always used?
Yes.
No, no alterations to it?
Nothing, no.
And you're not going to have more people living on the property to just for vehicles?
No, no.
Are there adequate utilities and other public services? And you've said you're not putting any water or electric?
Nothing, totally storage.
What is the neighborhood character and social structures?
The royal area.
Are you in a predominantly single family home area?
I am.
Okay. Are there any multifamily dwellings in your neighborhood?
No, they're all pretty much single family. Very nice neighborhood. And I own like the only woods on the property, you know, on the, on the street.
Are there any impacts on the natural, natural environment, including drainage?
No.
Okay. And is there any potential fiscal impact, including any impact on city services, the tax base and employment?
No.
Okay. And this is, again, since it's not being used to add to your residential living area, whether it's you or a future owner, this does not increase the likelihood of more people residing on the, on the property?
No. Storage only.
All right. I have to move to comment. Do you have anything further you would like to add before I do so?
No.
Thank you. All right. Is there any member of the public present who would like to speak on for or against this petition? There are some people I can't see behind you, but nobody's raising their hand? Thank you. And we have no attendees online, so I'm going to move to board questions. Mr. Reynolds, do you have any questions?
I had no questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Byrne, do you have any questions?
No, but I would like to say that Michael and I both visited the property. We were escorted around by the landowner. And to me, it looked like it was a good fit for the, for what he wants to do. It's going to screen the neighbors' properties from their backyards and their, and give them some privacy. And it's going to allow him the storage of the cars, very nice cars that he keeps in his driveway. I think it'd be good for him and the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Mr. Commissioner, you had a, wanted to make a comment.
Thank you. Yes, I didn't know if I'd actually, here's my. So just as a note, one of the gentlemen who identified himself as the neighbor that's most impacted, that's on the back of this, who this is encroaching upon the most, did stop by the office on Friday. And I spoke with him for a while. He looked at the file. I gave him a photocopy of the proposed plan and described everything. And he said that he was in favor of this. He had no issues with it.
Oh, great. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Mr. Talbot, any comments or questions?
No questions.
Mr. Gallagher, any comment or questions?
Yes, Madam Chair. I am in favor of it. The applicant certainly has a need for more storage. He has quality antique cars and I think it's a great idea for him. So I'm in favor of it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. McLaughlin, before you, I just wanted to note that we do have a communication. I'm going to read into the record. This is from Elmer Eubanks. And he states, I just noticed there is a meeting tonight. I am at work from seven to ten, so I can't fully attend, but can try to join from six to six forty five if it's not too late. I am sorry, mister, it was too late. I would like to write for the record my support for a special permit from David Frieda, one twenty five Exeter Street, who is my neighbor. I live at four twenty seven Oak Hill Road, directly in front of his property. Thank you. Mr. McLaughlin, go ahead.
No questions for the applicant. I guess we're kind of, you know, somewhat speaking with deliberation. You know, I find that it meets criteria for a special. The applicant has a lot that is twice the size of most all in the neighborhood. Where his property goes from one street to the next. So he has excess with rear lot setback. And, you know, this is a minimal request for the increase in nonconformity.
Okay. Thank you, sir. We're going to close now and move to deliberations. During deliberations, only board members can speak. Do you have anything you would like to add before we do that? Okay, thank you, sir.
Actually, I do have one letter from one of the neighbors that gave me today. But it's all approved. He says.
I'll, I'll take that if you, but I do have to keep it. So, all right, reading this into the record. Dear members of the Pittsburgh Zone Board of Zoning Appeals, this is also from Mr. Eubanks. I am writing to express my full support for David Frieda's request for a special permit to build an addition behind the existing nonconforming detached garage at one twenty five Exeter Street. Although I am unable to attend the meeting, I want to ensure that my support is formally documented. I believe that Mr. Frieda's proposal is reasonable and will not negatively impact the surrounding neighborhood. I trust that the board will carefully consider his application and grant the special permit. If you feel free to contact me if you require any additional information, Elmer Eubanks. Thank you, sir. All right. Then without objection, I'm going to close the public hearing. All right, and we're moved to deliberations. Is there, is there any member who is not favorably inclined towards this application? Okay. Is there any member who would like to offer conditions on the special permit? Go ahead, sir.
No conditions.
Okay.
Other than the, you know, as planned, as, you know, the plan is accepted. That there be, you know, construction debris kept clean and all that. Building Commissioner would, has his hand up.
I'm going to turn to him as soon as I finish writing. Go ahead, sir.
So the one condition I'd ask, which I'm trying to have as a standard condition for any dimensional variances and dimensional special permits. Is a sealed as-built plan once the foundation is set. So that, or a sealed as-built plan to confirm the, that they're meeting the dimensional relief.
I recommend that that condition be added as a board member.
Thank you. And I generally write that to state that the certificate of completion will not be issued until that on as-built plan, which is sealed, is submitted. For myself, I would also like to specify the relief that is granted. The side yard setback is to be reduced to three point six feet. Which means, sir, that you have to stick to the plan.
What's that?
It means that we, we have granted, we will grant you the right to build up to three point six feet. Which means you have to stay the line. You have to make sure that when the foundation is built, it is accurately built according to the plan.
Okay, I had surveyed already.
And that should be easy as long as your construction crew follows the plan. All right, so that is three conditions. The site to be kept clean during construction. The side yard setback on the right side of the property to be reduced to three point six feet. Along the edge of the building. And the applicant is to submit an as-built plan sealed prior to receiving a certificate of completion. Could I have a motion encompassing those conditions?
Are the board members, Madam Chair? Have any?
We're going to talk to the other board members? Okay. Is there any other board member who has any input on those conditions or who would want to modify those conditions? Is there any board member who would like to have a review date on the special permit? No? Okay. So without review?
Make the motion under ZBA two thousand and twenty four dash twenty three for David Frieda at one twenty five Exeter Street. For the special permit as requested with the conditions as stated by the board and the commissioner.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Special permit is granted. So after this meeting, the special permit will be written up to a written decision. Once the written decision is issued, it is filed with the city clerk. Once it is filed with the city clerk, there has to be twenty days that elapse to allow for any person to appeal the granting of the special permit. After that, the special permit can be used. You will need to record it at the Registry of Deeds. And then you will need to produce the recorded copy to the building department in order to get your building permit. You, of course, will have to follow whatever other requirements the building department has regarding construction of the extension of the garage. Do you have any questions about that process?
So I have to have a as-built drawing of the building before I can get my permit?
Nope, because the as-built measure, has someone go out and measure where the building is actually located after it is built. Yeah. So the same surveyor that you use to have the plan drawn should be able to go out and measure where the building actually landed. And of course, it is best to make sure that you have the right spot before you start digging the foundation.
Okay.
Because if it's in the wrong spot, you're going to have to come back before us and we may or may not grant you relief. Okay? All right. Good luck with your project, sir.
Thank you. Have a good day. Thank you.
You too. All right, the next matter before us, unless any board member needs a brief break. Pretty good to move forward. Is ZBA twenty four dash twenty four for six ten Townsend Street. This is a special permit petition by Admar Arpini Jr. Under section one eighty one point three three of the Pittsburgh zoning ordinance to expand a nonconforming three-season porch, ten by twenty four. Encroaching on the minimum thirty-five foot rear yard setback, leaving approximately twenty-two feet pursuant to section one eighty one point four one six, located in the residential aid district. Sir, welcome to the meeting.
Good evening.
Can you please give me your name and city of residence?
Admar Arpini, Pittsburgh, Mass.
Okay. Thank you for coming before us. On this property, how long have you owned the property?
I bought it in two thousand and eighteen.
Two thousand and eighteen?
Seven years, six years.
Okay. Were you, I know that these were recently constructed because I remember when Hollis Hills was Marshall Farms and there was apple trees in that vicinity. Were you the first owner or were you the second owner?
Second owner.
Second owner on the property? Okay. So you would like to expand a three-season porch? And the three-season porch is already over the setback?
I guess so.
Okay. And did you construct the three-season porch?
So I'll just fix one thing. The three-season porch is, if I'm not wrong, is I think sixteen by twenty-four.
Okay. And what you want to build on is ten by twenty-four? Okay.
That's why I skied.
When you bought the house, was it a screened-in sun porch or did you?
No, when I bought the house, it was a deck over there. My dad, or the previous owner, he's got a permit to extend the old deck. I got the permit with me. So we decided to build a three-season porch on the same size of the deck. And we got the permit for all the thing. And then everything goes well, far as I know. And then after there, we decided to build a deck, just to get off the porch, because, you know, it's just a little high. So we got a deck to make it nice. And then they stopped the job, so.
Could you mind being a little closer?
Sorry about it. Yeah, just let me repeat that. So the previous owners, he get the extended deck. He get the permit for the deck. And then when he bought the house, the deck's already there. And then we decided to build the three-season porch on the same size of the deck. And then we got the permit for that and then we did it. And we decided to move, build another deck to get off the three season. And then the way they stopped my project, so, far as I know.
Is there a reason that you can't simply build steps?
Yeah, I can build the steps too. Or I can build a deck. That's why I tried to build a deck, you know?
Can you describe the backyard and the surrounding properties?
So my backyard is woods on back. And I got a couple neighbors on the both sides, but the only neighbors, I spoke to them about the project. They say, hey, no, nothing against it, so.
So you've talked to your neighbors and nobody has an objection that they've told you?
Right.
And they're both single-family homes on each side of you? Are they both single-family homes?
Yes, all of them, yes.
And then what is behind you?
Behind me is woods.
Woods?
Yeah. And, yeah, this is woods.
Is there any agriculture going on back there?
No, far as I know.
Okay. So in any time that we have this kind of request, like the last gentleman was here before you. We need to determine first that the structure has been there long enough to be considered a preexisting nonconforming structure. And then we have to find that it will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what was there before. Okay? And so I think in this case, what you have is a deck that I believe was built under two thousand and nine permit. And so once the deck was there, it was there for longer than ten years. I'm not sure about the sunroom, but it didn't expand the footprint of the deck, correct?
Correct. And the sunroom was somewhat of a communication failure within the department. Where it was originally being handled by, by Tom Zupa. And then when he left, it kind of went unhoused for a while. And then John Morielli picked it up and didn't realize that, that there were issues until after it was built. And so Mr. Arpini was also wanting to do the deck. So instead of making him go for a variance and, and a special permit, we, we tried to put it all under one umbrella. So that, so that it would address his needs and his wife's needs. His wife came by the office a couple of times, kind of expressing how long she's been wanting this and how much work they've gone through to try to figure this out and the different layouts and everything they've attempted. And so that's where I suggested going for the extension of the nonconforming. At one point, they were thinking of dropping the deck altogether, so they didn't have to come before the board. And I said, they still have to come because of the, to fix the, the three-season room. So they decided to just go for the whole, the whole shebang for it. We also have some ongoing issues with, with an oven that they built in there without permits that were working on, that were working on getting it permitted. It's kind of a custom site-built oven. That, that is very unique design. You don't see many of them around. So we're, we're looking at how to get that permitted. But we decided to put it on hold until we knew that the three-season porch was, was permitted, because this is integral into that, into that three-season porch.
Is it an exterior oven that you're talking about?
No, it's an interior oven, kind of like a chimenea, but not. It, it's, it's like a multi-compartment oven and stove top. That, I don't know exactly how to describe it. Best is chimenea, but it actually has an integrated fluid system in it. So it vents directly to the outside with its own chimney and everything. It actually looks like it was well-constructed, but we, because it's. It actually looks like it was well-constructed, but we, because it's such a unique design, we're working with him to try to get it, so he doesn't have to get an engineer to stamp it. We can get it prescriptively, but we're still working on that.
Okay.
But we have that on hold until this hearing.
So, would you agree that this applicant in general is trying to be compliant?
Very much so. He's engaged his neighbor, who was an architect in a previous life, and they've given me multiple attempts at plans. As I said, his wife has come by the office a number of times when he was traveling for work. They've brought their son, who served as translator a couple of times as well, through the phone. He's been very actively trying to get this done and done right.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. I appreciate that.
Just one question for clarification, so we can move ahead, please.
Go ahead, Mr. McLaughlin.
Mr. Commissioner, just so I understand, it looks like, if I do the math, the three-season porch, if that was before us on its own, it would require an additional three feet?
I forget how many feet it would require, but it would require relief through a special permit.
Okay. So, a reduction in about three feet, and now the porch is another ten, so that's going to bring us down to twenty-two, right?
Yeah.
I believe...
But I think it's, I forget what the distance is that...
Setback requirement's thirty-five.
Yep.
So, it looks like we're asking for a reduction down to twenty-two.
Yep.
So, the deck is ten, and the three-season was requiring another three feet, right?
Yes.
Three foot over.
Sounds about right. Thank you.
All right. So, sir, I'm going to ask you, just like I did the last gentleman, the questions about the criteria and have you make a response to them. Why do you believe that the additional deck is not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood?
Because, like I said, behind my backyard, there's all the woods. And then it's not too close to my neighbors on the sides, because I've got a lot of spaces on the sides. So, and then I've got to enjoy with my family outside, you know, in the summertime, and...
Okay. And I'm going to go through the rest of the criteria and just have you give a response. Are there any social, economic, or community needs that are served by what you're doing?
Say it one more time, please.
Are there any social, community, or economic needs that are being served by your project?
I don't think so.
Okay. Is there any impact on traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading?
No.
Are there adequate public utilities and public services for the project? Do you have municipal water and sewer, or do you have septic?
I have a one-suit.
Okay. What's the character of the neighborhood?
What?
What other things are surrounding you? Is it mostly single-family homes?
Yes, all the single-family houses.
Are there any businesses near you?
No.
Okay. Are there any impacts on the natural environment, including drainage?
No.
Are you within any cons comm setback in the backyard?
Say it one more time, please.
Does the, is the backyard in any portion wetlands?
Yes.
Okay.
That's why, not the reason we build the deck, because when you have a lot of rains, you got like a pound outside by the trees.
Mr. Commissioner?
I don't think he knows what you're talking about.
No, all right. Hold on. I know I spoke to Herlen about this.
Okay.
Let me just pull up exactly what it was.
So, certain types of land, including wetlands, need to get approval for any building projects by the Conservation Commission. And what I'm asking, just to be sure that you're taking care of everything that you need to take care of, is whether you also need to see the Conservation Commission. And Mr. Commissioner is going to let us know.
Madam Chair, and here's a letter that we received just now. He said that the location of his people around him is higher, so water flows to him. That's probably what he's thinking about, the wetland.
Yes.
Not notified, realigned wetland.
Yes, thanks for...
Okay.
Yeah, that's what happened.
The Commissioner will verify for us.
I'm trying to find it. I know I spoke to Herlen, and that sounds right. I'm just trying to see where, if it was in writing or not.
Regardless, the deck you're proposing would be up?
Yes.
So, you wouldn't be paving or putting any kind of block underneath the deck?
No.
So...
Yeah. Herlen said non-jurisdictional.
Non-jurisdictional. Great. Great. You do not need to see the Conservation Commission.
Oh, yes.
Okay. I'm asking, is, would water drain just as it does right now?
Yes.
Okay. And the last one is whether there's any potential fiscal impact, including any impact on city services, tax base, and employment. And the question I'm going to ask you is whether the sunroom is, it's a three-season, not a four-season, correct?
To become a four-season, I think. Because the reason did this, this make me, because the way I travel, and then my English is a little weak, and I let the contractor, the contractor talk to the, to the inspector about everything. So, that's why sometimes I don't know what the answer you're asking me for, because they deal together. And then the contractor left me alone, so, because all the situation come through. And then that's why I try, sometimes I don't know which answer we're asking for.
Okay. Are you planning to make this into a bedroom or other, in the living area at all?
No.
Okay. All right.
Well, he's somewhat made it impossible with this chimenea that he's built.
I am going to move on to reading correspondence that we have. Do you have any other comment before I move forward?
No.
Okay. Thank you, sir. So, we've received a letter.
That's from...
Oh, this is the letter from you. Okay. So, you submitted an additional letter to us last week, and I'm just going to note that this is being added to the application materials. And in it, you talk about, you've given us a... Okay. So, you've given us a visual, a picture of what the house looked like when you bought it?
Mm-hmm.
And what it looks like from the top right now, depicting the forest behind you. Okay. Thank you. Give that back to you. All right. I'm now going to go to public comment. Is there any person present who would like to make a comment on for or against this quest, this application? Sir? Okay. Mr. Arpini, could you have a seat for a moment?
Sure.
Sir, you're welcome to the meeting. Please give us your name and city of residence.
Good evening. My name is Valzenc Lebba-Bars. I am his neighbor. And when we talk about his deck over there, because his house, it's lower, and then we have a little hill like that gentleman say about the water running down the hill. And then if he put just steps, it go down to the grass, because it's all woods behind, doesn't get a lot of sun. And then if you keep, come up and down, it's going to be muddy. And then this is why we gave, I just say, "Why you don't build a deck? This way you don't be in the ground. You can enjoy your backyard for the sun when you have a lot of rain." And now it drains fast, but it's still, if you go walking back and forth on the grass, they will bring mud up. That's why I'm a favor of his deck. It's not affect anybody either side or in the back, because it's all woods.
Okay.
You know, in his house, if you guys went there, you see it's very clean, very well maintained. And he's a good neighbor, not a lot of noise, not a lot of traffic. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your coming to the meeting and making comment. Is there any other person who would like to make a comment on for or against this Seeing none in person and there being none online, I am going to just ask if Mr. Commissioner has any further comment before I close the public hearing.
No.
Okay. Then I'm going to move to deliberations. We're going to close the public hearing, which means only the board members are going to be in discussion. And so, without objection, I'm going to close the public hearing. Okay. Thank you. Is there any board member who wants to make a comment on the allowance or non-allowance of this special permit? Mr. Berg?
Again, Michael and I visited the property, and we were escorted around by the property owner. And a deck would be nice to have on the property. Like was explained by his neighbor, it is low and it is wet. And if it was, if a deck wasn't allowed to be placed there, and it is placed on sonar tubes and it's raised, so it's not on the ground, it's, the ground will be able to aerate itself. To me, it makes sense to put it there. And even though it is encroaching a little bit into, against the wood line, there's still nothing there, and nothing can be built there, so it's not going to infringe upon anything.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Berg.
You're welcome.
Mr. Reynolds, any comment or question?
No comment, no question. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Talbot?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I visited the site also today and noted that the property is very well-maintained.
Thank you.
Lawn looks beautiful.
Thank you.
I noticed the woods out back, and I don't see it as being detrimental at all to the neighborhood. In fact, it would be positive addition to his property. So, I would be in favor of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Had a chance to visit Mr. Arpini, and the property is impeccable, beautiful.
Thank you.
Very well-kept, as well as the neighbors. I think it's a minimal request that there is no impact to the rear. There's no home to the rear. It's all a wooded area, and I think it meets the criteria for the special permit request.
Okay. Thank you, sir. As for myself, I am not pleased about the way that this began, in that the, I think the creation of the sunroom was a bit beyond what you were allowed to do. I am pleased that Mr. Commissioner stated that you are attempting to be in full compliance at this point in time. I am a little iffy on whether the deck is really necessary. I think that steps would be adequate and don't require any relief from us. But I agree that there is unlikely to be any impact on the neighbors behind you. And, you know, other than that, I would encourage you to make sure you're in full compliance when you start a project before the city. So, in general, I would be in favor of approval. I'd take any board member comment on conditions. The conditions that I would have would be similar to the last, really identical to the last special permit. And that are, those are, number one, the specific relief that you are granted is to reduce the rear yard setback to twenty-one point seven feet, that the site is to be kept clean during construction, and that after construction is completed, you are required to submit an as-built plan, which is sealed by an engineer, before you will receive your certificate of completion. And that is particularly true, because in your case, you drew in, on a plan, what you wanted to have there. So, we really don't have any accurate measurement of what is existing. The caveat, the warning on this, is that we've allowed the rear yard to be reduced by twenty-one point seven feet. That means you must be precise when you measure and install the deck. And if you are wrong, you may have to move it, okay?
Okay.
The as-built plan will confirm the measurements to the Building Department. Unless there are any other conditions requested, and I don't have any indication we would need a review date, I'd be looking for a motion on the allowance of the special permit.
Make a motion under ZBA twenty-two forty-four dash twenty-four for Admar Arpini Jr. for the property at six-ten Townsend Street for the request for the special permit with the conditions as stated by the chair.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, your special permit is granted. Like the last gentleman, I'm going to remind you that the decision must be reduced to writing, that writing will be filed with the city clerk's office. Once it is filed with the city clerk's office, twenty days must pass to allow for anyone to appeal. After that, the decision becomes final. You must record it at the Registry of Deeds, and then you must bring a copy of the recorded special permit to the Building Department to receive your building permit, and you must comply with all of their other conditions for getting a building permit. Did you want to make a comment?
Just wanted to make the comment that I have made it a practice at certain times of the year to allow, to allow people at risk while they're waiting for, because it takes sometimes a month, month and a half to write the decision, while they're waiting for the decision to be written, they can make a conscious risk decision, and at risk, start the construction, so that you don't run into the cold weather. And then we wouldn't be able to issue the final inspections and approvals until that twenty-day period is over. But at least you could be starting construction. But it's a risk, because if someone does appeal it, you might have to rip it out. So, that's really a risk judgment that the applicant has to make. But I do, I have allowed it in certain, when certain people have asked for it, not certain people, anybody has asked for it. I just like them to have an informed decision on that.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. All right. Your hearing is concluded.
Okay.
Good luck with the project, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling the next matter, ZBA twenty-four dash twenty-six on seventy-six Summer Street. Sir, I apologize for what I am probably going to do to your name. Olan Rewaju?
Spot on.
Okay.
But you can just call me Larry.
Oh, Yarunbi.
Call me Larry.
Okay. Welcome to the meeting, sir.
Thank you.
You are here for a special permit under Section 181.313D3 of the Fitchburg Zoning Ordinance to operate a Class D driving school pursuant to Section 181.94, located in the Neighborhood Business District. Sir, welcome.
Thank you.
We, I have said your name in some fashion, and could you also state the city of residence for yourself?
Okay. My name is Olan Rewaju, Oyarunbi.
Thank you.
From the City of Gardner, Massachusetts.
Thank you. Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you.
So, you would like to operate a Class D driving school, which I understand to be a regular passenger car vehicle license?
That's correct.
Yeah. And which is allowed in that district by special permit. So, could you please give us a little description of what you would like to do?
Okay. Basically, the office is located, will be located at seventy-six Summer Street for in-class instructions for students who are below the age of eighteen. They start from sixteen and a half years of age, and then once they hit eighteen, they're ready to go for their road work. Now, the road work entails us, in the vehicle, the driving school car has an instructor's brake on the passenger side, and the vehicle will have the signage on it. So, we exit the premises of the office, and we drive down into a neighborhood that I've already described. I don't know whether you got that in my...
So, I did. And sometimes I'll tell you, I ask questions because it's a public meeting, and I want to make sure that the public has all the... and I want to make sure that the public has all the information that we do, just for transparency.
So as we drive out from the premises of 76 Summer Street, we hang a left and we get to a street sign, um, streetlights. From that streetlights, there are quiet streets on the le, on the right, which is Maverick, Hancock, Kane, and Matthew. Very quiet neighborhood, no traffic whatsoever. That's where we perform all the necessary maneuvers. The maneuvers are listed, parallel park, three-point turn, and reverse. So within that area, we also practice the left turns and the right turns. Every other thing they need to pass the road tests will be tested within the vehicle, which is just the hand signals and that's it.
Okay. Approximately, how many people would you be seeing daily?
Well, I hope to be able to operate between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. During the high light hours of the year. But when it gets dark early, we're not permitted to do any form of road work once it gets dark. So it will be reduced to 6 o'clock towards the end of the year when it gets dark early.
Sometimes towards the end of the year, I feel like it gets dark at 3:30 in the afternoon.
What you're saying is absolutely true. It's gotten to midnight dark around 4 o'clock before. And I was like, wow.
But you are holding classes inside the building, of course?
That is the plan. It's a prerequisite for the final approval from the RMV.
How many employees will you have?
It's just me at the moment.
Do you, would there be plans to expand if needed?
If needed, yes.
The, the point I, I really want to understand about what you're doing is connected to what instruction would take place within the parking lot. Because that is a building with a lot of different uses going on. So if you are going to, for instance, practice parking, pulling out, going around, whether there's any kind of instruction going on within the parking lot other than pulling out into the road and going down to the neighborhood?
Okay, that's a very good question. So part of what we also train is, as you said, parking within the markings. Because when you park outside the market, it's categorized as you violating a traffic marking, a traffic marking violations. So we also do that because most times when we go for the road tests from the RMV on our way back, they're designated spots where the student is expected to park into to come to a complete stop and conclude the road test. So yes, there will be a situation where I might need to practice that. Based on the layout of the, of the space there, there's a whole lot of parking spaces there. And there's a few secluded places where there's hardly any vehicle parked at all.
So it, in my observations of that building, it seems like if you're looking at the front of the building,
Yeah.
most of the time, the parking on the left is more frequently used than the parking on the right.
Yes.
So would you be...
Further behind the right, there's still a lot of space at the back that's hardly ever occupied.
Are you able to kind of, with the permission of the landlord, mark out and segregate some portion of the parking lot for students to be able to do that?
That could be done, yes. I've discussed it with her, but she said we should need to jump this hurdle first.
Yeah. Well, I, I, I realize that, so there's, there's a lot that goes on with that building. And for instance, there's a portion of the lot that was sold off that really you have no reason to know one way or the other was done. And I'll, I believe that it may be that the, the building requires some form of site plan review, but I, I think, you know, that is a planning board resolution and I, I will leave that to the planning board. Is it, are your proposed hours of operation Monday through Friday?
And sometime, and Saturday as well.
And Saturdays as well. And 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Saturday proposed as well? And I assume, I, I do not know what you require for licensing in order to be a driving instructor, but I presume that you have the licensing required.
Yes, I have a professional driver's instructor certificate from the RMV.
Thank you.
We renew it annually.
I am going to open this up to other questions. Are there, is there anything you wanted to add before I do that?
Not at this moment, thank you.
Okay. Is there any person present who would like to make a comment on for or against this matter? Seeing none present and no persons online. Mr. Commissioner, do you want to make any comment on this application?
Just that it likely also will need licensing, licensing, commission licensing board approval or city council, I don't know which, it's through the city clerk's office. I believe for the driving school. I'm not 100% on that, but I'd suggest checking with the city clerk.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Byrne?
Sure.
Any questions for the applicant?
No. I do want to say that I do have some background in...
Oh, I'm sorry, you still talk?
I was going to say, I'm wrong, I think that's just auto repair.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would be surprised if the city council license required.
It's not, it's not licensed, it's not driving school.
I do have some input on this. My mother-in-law used to run a driving school here in the city for many, many years. And there are no, no city council requirements. And he doesn't need the parking lot of 76 Summer Street to practice his parking. It can be done anywhere in the city. He gave us a schematic of where he was going to be driving and things like that, but that's unnecessary also. He can take a student anywhere in the state and practice their driving. So what he needs is classroom space. And that's for the, in, like he said, the driving learning process. The road tests can be anywhere, but he needs that classroom, classroom at 76. So that's all he really needs. And I don't see any reason why he can't get it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Byrne. Appreciate the information.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Reynolds, do you have any questions for the applicant?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Talbot, any questions for the applicant?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gallagher?
Yes. How big is the space that the classroom will be? Do you happen to know roughly?
I don't have the, I have my lease here, but it's not stated on the lease, the exact, but the, the RMV, an RMV field official came and he previewed the offices that were available that I wanted to pick from, and he approved them all. So from the list of what I need to submit for the final approval for my driving school is the certificate of occupancy, which is what I'm trying to achieve right here.
Okay. And how many students at a time will you be instructing?
Maximum of 10.
Maximum of 10?
Yeah.
And how many vehicles do you have for instruction?
Right now, I have only one that I'm operating with.
Just one, okay. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome, sir.
Hi. Mr. McLaughlin, any questions for the applicant?
No questions, ma'am, thank you.
Okay. We also have some city comments on this application. So the planning department has noted that at the ZBA's discretion, a site plan approval for the parking could be an option for this proposal. And then from the Board of Health, the parking lot on the Beacon Street side needs to be maintained, mowed, and trash picked up. And Beacon Street side, the left side?
Yes.
Right? Yeah. That's the left-hand side.
I believe the...
That is a comment that the property owner needs to...
That's what I wanted to say.
The property owner needs to be maintaining the lot on the Beacon Street side better than they are doing currently.
Beacon side, okay.
Sometimes we wave a flag to get someone's attention when we have the opportunity. And the Board of Health, you know, its, its job is to constantly fight against the issue of deterioration and blight in the city. And lack of maintenance is how it starts, so, yeah. All right. I want to take a moment to review the parking requirements for this use under the city ordinance. So generally, it is one parking space for each five seats, each five students. And one space for each 10 linear feet of bench, if benches are used. So they're measuring chairs or benches. But it's really, I, I think in your, in your case, how many students are there?
Yeah.
Where no fixed seats are used, for each 100 square feet of public floor area, there shall be one parking space. And how, how big did you say, about 500 square feet, the interior office that you're using?
Yeah, that's what I, I don't have the dimensions here and it wasn't listed, it wasn't mentioned on my lease. Wasn't mentioned on my lease. But like I said, the RMV official that came to do the pre-inspection, he approved it and he's waiting on the results of this meeting as well.
Very good. Okay.
I think so.
So I, I, I will say that I, I do believe the owner of this property needs to submit an updated parking plan to the city generally. I'm personally not inclined to hold them to that for this particular special permit. But they do need to update the parking plan through a site plan with the planning board. And the owner of this property would be well advised that if there are any existing special permits or site plans that have been approved by the planning board, that they might be subject to recall before the planning board for updating of the parking plan. This is directed at the owner of the property, not you, sir. And it would probably be beneficial for the property owner to seek that approval first rather than be brought before the planning board later. All right, we're going to move to deliberations. Is there anything else you'd like to say before I close the public hearing?
Not at this moment, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Without objection, I am closing the public hearing. Going to move to deliberation. Is there any person who would like to make a comment on the allowance of the special permit? Okay. I'll make a comment briefly that I think the applicant meets the criteria. I, I see no substantial detriment to the city. I see a benefit from the opening of a business and the offering of another option for instruction for our young people who will hopefully become good drivers. I do have a little bit of concern about parking, the instruction within the parking lot. I realize, Mr. Byrne, what you're saying regarding the ability to conduct this driving instruction anywhere. There are other lots within the city which are less used and might be a, a better place to conduct that, you know, park in, park in the space. What I would be looking for, because I am inclined to allow the special permit, would be a condition that the applicant, when conducting instruction on the onsite parking lot, mark out with safety cones an area appropriate to safeguard the public from the students' actions. So. I am not inclined to really restrict the operations here. I, I do believe that the employee issue, adequate parking for employees, adequate parking for customers, adequate parking for the vehicles that are used for instruction. I would say that where I would be inclined to put a limitation is if there are more than three vehicles being used for instruction, that the applicant must come back before us. If there are more than five employees, that the applicant should come back before us. And at that point in time, I would be inclined to look at a parking plan on this property to make sure that parking is adequate. So that is three conditions. And does anyone have a comment on other conditions or the proposed conditions?
Six-month review maybe? Give him a chance to get through all his permitting processes and get going.
How soon do you, would you be prepared to open for business, sir?
Once I'm given this approval, that's the only thing outstanding in my application packet with the RMV. So once I submit, we arrange a date for the final site inspection. So if the choice was mine, I'd start next week.
I know several people in that position, sir. And, and waiting for, especially waiting for state-level inspections sometimes takes a long time. I think that a, a plus eight months review date might be appropriate. Because I think there'll be a little time before the business is open. And I would like to see six months of operations and see how it goes. All right. And that would...
March.
That would put us to April or March. So I'd be inclined to March. And so can we have given that a motion?
March what? Okay. Yeah, before we close, Mr. Oyarunbi, excellent presentation. I think it's a service well-needed, I think it's a good place for it. Maybe you could just help pass on to the property owner. In the recent past, there's been a lot of junk and abandoned vehicles on the property. I think he's cleaned it up, but maybe you could just, you know, kind of mention that to him that, you know, we want to see the property grow, the businesses grow, and that would just help us all get there.
Got it.
Thank you, we wish you the best.
You're very welcome.
I'll make a motion on ZBA 2024-26 for the property at 76 Summer Street to approve the special permit as requested and with the condition as stated by the chair.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? So the special permit has been granted, sir?
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. You have heard the recitation on the process of the decision needs to be written. Once written, it will be filed with the city clerk. Once filed with the city clerk, there is a 30, 20-day appeals period that has to lapse before the special permit is final. Once final, it must be recorded at the registry of deeds. Even though you are not the property owner, it still must be recorded at the registry of deeds. With that recorded copy of the special permit, the building department can then issue the permit to you, okay? If you have any questions about the process going along, please feel free to reach out to the building department on those questions. Please remember to abide by the conditions. And we will have a review date of March 11th, 2025. Hopefully, you will be in operation for a few months by that point in time.
Yeah.
And the purpose of the board is just to see how things are working, see if any adjustment is necessary, okay?
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Have a nice night.
You too.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time.
The next matter is ZBA 24-27, Ryan Vickers 38 School Street. This is a request for a special permit under section 181.335 of the Pittsburgh code to construct a 12-by-3 addition on a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling, reducing the existing 17.6-foot rear yard setback to 14.18. reducing the existing 17.6-foot rear yard setback to 14.9 feet, where a 30-foot rear yard setback is required pursuant to 181.94 located in Residential B. Welcome to the meeting. If you could each, please give us your name and city of residence.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. Greg Roy with Dillison Roy. I'm representing the applicant this evening.
My name is Jim Barrett. I live at the subject house in Pittsburgh, 38 School Street.
Thank you very much and welcome to you both.
Thank you. We appreciate your time. I'll try to be brief this evening. As you read, we are here for 38 School Street to request a special permit pursuant to Section 181.313, or 33, excuse me, of the ordinance. The property is located in the Residence B zoning district. The requirements for area is 10,000 square feet in that district, frontage at 80 feet. The property is in excess of 16,000 square feet and 197 feet of frontage, so there's no issue with, with nonconformity of the lot. However, the structure, which was, I believe, constructed in the 1800s, I think assessors' records have it at about 1840, is nonconforming relative to your, both the front and the rear setback. The rear setback in the district requirement is 30 feet. The existing structure is setback 17.6 feet, the principal structure, that is. I did want to note there's an existing detached garage on the property as well that is setback, that is four feet from the, from that existing rear line. The application before you this evening is a, a small addition in the size of 12 feet by three feet, so three feet out from the, the rear of the building and 12 feet in length, so a total of approximately 36 square feet. The purpose is to renovate the kitchen. As the applicant was working through plans for that, it became desirable to increase the square footage of the kitchen area. Thank you. It's the plot plan that was submitted. So we're here this evening, as I mentioned, to request the special permit. We did file, along with our application, a zoning narrative which addressed the six special permit criteria. I'll just try to briefly summarize those.
I appreciate that.
As I know you've asked the, the previous applicants. The first one being social, economic, or community needs which are served by the proposal. We did give you a, we did opine on the, the, the projects. The project will not substantially alter the, the character of the neighborhood, but I guess I wanted to point out further on this point that, albeit modest, we do expect this to have a, a net positive impact in tax revenue. We will be, the applicants will be putting in some, an investment in the property. This will, of course, impact assessed value. So we, we don't see any derogation from any social, economic, or community needs. If anything, a small, modest improvement to tax revenue, with no impact on more residence or, or anything. There's no change in use of the property. Traffic, the second criteria would be traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading. There are no proposed changes to that on the site. So we expect no change, or there's no proposed modifications, so no change expected. Third would be adequacy of utilities and other public services. Again, no change. It just, we're just bumping out, making an interior room larger, so there'd be no change to the utilities at the site or any public services. Fourth would be neighborhood character and social structures. The proposed addition is in the rear of the house, so School Street being the frontage. The bump-out is on the back. There are no budding structures directly adjacent to where the proposed addition is going. It will be a single-story addition. Again, just bumping that wall up three feet with a shed-style roof, clapboard-style siding with windows, a double window that we put in that to match the rest of the windows in the house. So we, the, the intention of the applicant is to make that seamless with the existing architecture of the house. Five would be impacts on the natural environment, including drainage. We do not expect any impacts, really given the size, the minimal size that we're proposing. And any potential fiscal impacts, including impact on city services, tax base, and employment. And again, I, I addressed that in the first criteria. Albeit modest, we expect a slight increase in, in tax revenue due to the investment in the property and the increased assessed value. And then contrasting that with no offsetting impacts on city services. And I think that's all. I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you, sir. I think I stated this in the online review, but I think this is one of the best repaired applications that we have seen. And I appreciate
I have my staff to thank for that. Ryan Vickers, who's on your agenda.
I, I appreciate the, the effort and the professionalism that went into the application. It makes the job of the board in evaluating the application much easier. A couple of questions for you. Number one, as you can see, the, from the plan that was provided, this is an odd-shaped lot. And although the, the area is adage, I don't think there is any setback that has been complied with, with the, any of the dwellings or structures on the plan. But where this is a corner-shaped lot, the portion of the property that is labeled "owned by Robert F. Corb," now or formerly, what is the use that is going on on that property?
So you're talking in the, in the back, adjacent to other proposed?
Yeah, in back of the
Yeah, sure.
exterior corner.
And that actually goes around to the left as well, Madam Chair. So the house that's on that property is situated to the left on the intersection of, I think it's Arlington Street and School Street. So the, the two properties kind of intermesh, so.
Like two elves.
Right. So that, that property elves around. And so the house sits on the left and it's on, as far as I know, undeveloped piece of that same property in the back.
Yeah, that's open ground. There are two gigantic oak trees on it and nothing else.
So no activities are going on there, other than a backyard maybe?
In fact, if, at the top of the chart there, which you can't see, that's Chestnut Street. It's a dead end. And there's an embankment down there that is about 20 feet drop. So there's no driveways coming in there or anything, and it's, there's just houses on the other side of Chestnut Street.
How long is construction expected to take?
That's a good question. But I would expect two months, max. Almost all of his interior. We're going to have to pour footings for this. And, but that would be the only, and then, and then reframe the bump-out, but other, everything else would be inside.
Is there adequate space on the property for off-street parking for the work vehicles?
Yes, there's room for four cars. Four trucks, too, for that matter.
All right. I think that is all the questions that I have. I'm going to move to other comments. Is there any person present who would like to make a comment on or against this application? Seeing none. Mr. Commissioner, do you have any comments in the application?
No, it was very straightforward and very thorough, as, as the chair has said.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Byrne, any comment?
Again, Michael and I went to the site. And initially, I thought there was something wrong. I mean, who does a three-foot extension on a, on a room? So, but I was pleasantly surprised. We were welcomed on the property and we were shown what is to be done. And it's going to be magnificent when it's finished. The kitchen is going to be something his wife is going to be loving. I know the, I know the people at the, at the architect, but the carpenter, who's going to do this? And I know the work that's going to be done is magnificent. The home is an older home here in Pittsburgh, and it is beautifully restored on the inside. That's all I have to say. I think we should grant this and move on.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to ask whether you know whether the home is registered on MACRIS.
Registered on what, ma'am?
Historical.
I don't know.
It's historical.
Okay. I'm going to move on.
You don't want to know.
Mr. Gallagher, I'm going to take you next.
Doesn't I believe it?
Thank you.
What does that mean?
One down from a Form A.
Had to ask, didn't I?
Late-night humor.
It's how the state kind of classifies, and I remembered seeing that on the inventory many, many years ago. So I think Form B doesn't have a lot of restrictions. But it is noted for its historical significance to the community.
Okay, well, if I may, as was, is in the presentation, the carpentry work in the exterior will match the existing clappards, trim, and the windows will all match. It's only three feet deep. It'll have, the slope of the bump-out will be the same as the slope of the existing roofs and the structure. So it's kind of a stealth bump-out. I hope nobody even notices it when we're done.
I agree. I feel like it's in keeping with the character of what you currently have, so that the board knows. I visited the site today, and I think that expanding the kitchen is a great idea for the house, giving you more useful space. Kitchens are a focal point, and I think it's a benefit to the, to the building itself, but also to the neighborhood. So I'm in favor of it.
Thank you, sir. I have located the listing. It is indeed on MACRIS. So it is known as the Baldwin House. Mr. Talbot, do you have any comments or questions?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. McLaughlin?
No, it's going to be a great project. Just for clarification, we're only granting relief for six inches, correct? Side setbacks fifteen, this is going to be fourteen-six?
It is a 30-foot setback.
Yeah, it's a three-foot relief. So currently, it's 17, the back of the house is 17 feet, six inches, and after construction, it would be 14 feet, nine inches.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
I'm thinking side setback because it's facing.
Yeah, it's a little funny how it is.
It's facing downtown.
Right, yeah. It looks like the side, but it's away from the street, so I guess it's the back.
Okay. So for reference, this is the inventory photograph
Wow.
of the property.
Those trees are gone.
Yeah.
Yep. So we do try to take care with properties that are listed in MACRIS, that any exterior changes to the property respect and reproduce the architected elements that are currently present on the house. Where this is an addition, be it small, you are going to be newly constructing a portion of the house. I, it is in the rear of the house. I didn't note any architecturally significant features that would be altered by this addition, Mr. Gallagher?
No.
I'm sorry. You asked me a question.
I know. I didn't note any architecturally significant features that would be altered by this addition.
There are none.
Okay, Mr. Talbot, would you agree?
There doesn't appear to be any, no.
Okay, thank you. But what I would ask, and, and you'll hear this in the condition, is that respect be taken for the integrity of the architectural features of this house to maintain its significance on MACRIS.
Okay, absolutely.
Okay. If there's nothing else, I'm going to move to close the hearing. Anything else to add?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Without objection, the hearing is closed. I, I'm going to assess that I don't hear any opposition to the special permit. And as far as conditions, I would, I would place the following conditions. That the windows finish and exterior architecture of the addition match the existing dwelling. That no historically significant architectural features on the exterior be altered or removed during construction. And given the very tight neighborhood, that all work vehicles to be parked off-street during construction. An as-built plan to be submitted
Thank you.
prior to the certificate of completion being issued.
And that's where he comes out and re-measures from the foundation to the boundary line. Okay.
And then, very specifically, the rear yard setback is reduced to 14.9 feet. So place your construction in the right place.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any board member who has an additional condition to propose, or any comment on the proposed conditions? Very good. Then I would be looking for a motion on the allowance of the special permit.
I'll make the motion under ZBA 2024-27 for the property at 38 School Street, owned by James Barrett and Deborah Barrett, to grant the special permit under 181.335 as requested, with the conditions as stated by the chair.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Special permit is granted. I, I did not hear a request for review.
Okay.
And but again, as with other applicants, board members may stop by and
Sure.
the project as time goes by. If there's a violation of the special permit, the board can bring you back before.
You're all welcome anytime. I just warned those who had been there before, watch the footing out in the front yard, because it's, the slope is a little uneven.
Okay.
Last question, on the 20 days, is that 20 calendar days or 20 business days?
It is 20 calendar days from the filing of the decision with the city clerk.
And that usually takes about a month?
Yeah.
Okay.
Always hope to reduce that timeline, but.
Hold on a sec.
I'll give the same caveat opportunity I gave.
We could pour the footing at our own risk.
You can build it at your own risk.
Build everything at our own risk?
Yes, so you won't be able to go past the framing inspection until the 20 days is up. But, but we can at least get you going so that while you're waiting, because it sometimes takes some time.
Yeah, yeah.
That you can build, build it at your own risk, but then we can't issue you a final occupancy or anything until
The odds of being finished in 20 days are
Correct.
Zero.
Well, it's, it's not being finished. It's
No, I understand.
a month and a half more like that. But we do offer that. We've had some people take us up on it. Some have been more conservative and waited.
No, we'll be calling the excavator tomorrow.
So, well, you need to get the building permit first.
I'll be filing it tomorrow. Hey bosses, what was I supposed to say?
That's right, yeah. And you can forego the, I can advise my client on the procedural of the appeal periods and things further if you'd like, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Gentlemen, good luck with the project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming this evening. All right, and we are now at the last matter on our agenda. This is ZBA 24-30. This is for 672 to 678 Water Street, and this is for Tufek Ulos. This is a request for a special permit under Section 181.313, D11 and 12, to transfer a prior special permit for the business use as a small motor vehicle sale and grant an additional use as a motor vehicle repair shop due to business ownership change pursuant to 181.94 located in the neighborhood business district. Sir, welcome to the meeting. Please give us your name and city of residence.
Tufek Ulos, Lumsdale, Massachusetts.
Okay, welcome, sir. So this is your request for a special permit. Have you been the operator on this property previously?
No.
Okay. Did you purchase the business? Did the prior business close? How did you come to be on the property?
Sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Did you purchase the business? Did the prior business close? How did you come to be on the property?
Oh, no, I just left. I have a down, a down deposit on it and depend on and depend on intent of use. If it got approved, I can, I'll go forward and purchase it.
Okay, always best to do it that way.
Yeah.
And would this be to purchase the real estate or just the business?
No, the real estate and the business.
The real estate and, okay, great. All right. So there have been prior businesses located here that have been motor vehicle sales. And so with most motor vehicle sales, we require the person operating the business to be the one that holds the special permit. And if you change that, we need a new special permit. And that's because, you know, this type of business has a tendency to get a bit messy, create a bit of nuisance. So we want to make sure that the person who owns the property keeps it well-maintained and well-operated. So please go ahead and give me a little description of what you'd like to do.
Okay, so technically, we're looking to have a dealership. So we purchase cars through auctions or like trade-in cars. And then, you know, we're asking for the repair shop so we can go through the cars, repair them because they're second-hand used vehicles. So some of them were, they require some repairs, you know, from some of them minimal repairs, some of them major repairs before we can sell them because we sell them with guarantee. And we have the Lemon Law in Massachusetts, so we have to guarantee the car. We have to make sure everything is good. And in the meantime, you know, because the business sometime will be busy, it'll be slow. So, you know, if we can have repairs, because we have already mechanics working on our cars, we can have some repairs so we can be generating more profit.
Okay, so both repair to sell and just simple repairs for customers coming in. Do you have a dealer's license at this point?
I'm a dealer under a different business. I've been working in this industry since 2017.
And I think you need to, in order to have a license at this location, you need to specifically have permission to operate at this property, right?
Sure. Yeah, so like basically now, I'm a licensed dealer under a different dealer that give me an access to go to auctions because it's only specific for dealers. So in order to purchase car, I manage the dealership. I manage repairs and I manage the sales.
Okay. Where have your other locations been?
The location right now?
Sure.
Yeah, it's 91 Laurel Street.
Have you ever been a dealer at any other locations?
I started first in Lomster for like nine months, and then I moved here. And since then, I worked there and I started as like a sales and then I worked my way up.
So when you were in Lemonster, you weren't responsible for the whole dealership?
It was just a small dealership. It was, it's a two-business separate. Like the repair was in a location and the sales was in one location. I was just a runner and then, you know, moving cars from the repair. It was just like fifteen-car dealership, a small one.
How many vehicles do you propose to have for sale on the lot?
If I can get twenty-seven, same like before.
Twenty-seven? How many employees will you have?
It'll be seven.
How many bays in the garage?
There's two-bays garage already on the property.
Are you going to be doing any bodywork or painting?
No, just mechanical.
What are your proposed hours of operation?
So I, one second. It will be, my proposal will be Monday to Friday, eight AM to six-thirty PM, and Saturday, eight AM to three PM, and Sunday, closed.
How soon would you be ready to open? Once you receive the, if you receive the permitting, how long would it take you to open the business?
I'm hoping before the end of the year. The team that I have right now, it'll all be moving with me. And we already have cars, so we'll just be switching dealership.
Are you closing Water Street, Laurel Street?
Laurel Street, 91 Laurel Street.
You're moving.
Yeah, I'm just gonna move my cars and, you know, we already have our tools and my mechanics. They're just gonna move with us over there.
Sorry, Madam Chair, I just needed a quick clarification.
Are you planning on making any exterior changes to the building?
No.
What is your signage plan? What will you be putting up for signs?
So there's only, there's one sign outside. I would just use the same one, but, you know, change what's in it. And then everything else will be inside the office. And just a couple of flags outside, the standard flags.
Lights on the building?
Yes.
Will you have any uplighting on the sign?
What is it?
Will you have any uplighting on the sign?
No.
Okay.
It's gonna be, just, it's a pole with a sign on top. And then, so that's, and the other will be like, just like flag, we, like used cars or like, you know, oil change stuff like that. And just like some projector on the building, on the car. So just first for like safety, we can see the front cameras if somebody tried to break in cars. And at the same time, if somebody, some people, especially in winter because it gets dark soon, people after work go look for cars and then they inquire because they don't have time during the day. So they would just go and check it, leave a voicemail or leave a lead online. And then we get back to them and then they'll come on Saturday or whenever they have a day off. So they can look at the car at night, at least can see the information inside the car or look at it from the outside.
Are you planning to have an employee on-site during your open hours at all times?
Yeah.
Okay. Are you planning on constructing any light poles?
No.
Okay. So all of the lights that you're talking about are gonna be projected from the building?
Yeah, from like the roof of the building and then towards the floor. So the dealership, we're on it, me and my brother. It'll be, he's with me too. He's gonna be partner.
Are you going to be using an entity, a corporation or an LLC?
LLC.
Have you formed the LLC?
Yeah, we have one for the real estate. We already formed this called Boulos Realty LLC. And that will be the business. If hopefully we buy it, it will be under this business. And then we're gonna make another LLC for the dealership. It will be like, has a name for like, to catch you for the auto.
And could you say the name of the existing LLC?
Boulos Realty LLC. B-O-U-L-O-S Realty.
Your last name?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I have some other questions, but what I'm going to do right now is move to a public comment. Do you have anything else to add before I go to that?
No.
Okay. So first, I'm gonna note that we have a comment from the planning department that if the special permit is approved, you will also need site plan approval from the planning board. And so that is a second process that you will need to go through. I think that's all we have for city comments. Okay. Is there any of the member of the public who would like to make comment on for or against this petition? Seeing none present and none online. Mr. Commissioner, did you want to make any comment?
No, Mr. Boulos has been trying to do the, get this done for a while. He started this process before the summer break, I believe, and has been anxiously waiting to have this hearing and move forward with this process.
Have you received any kind of photovoltaic plan? Any plan indicating how the lighting is going to be cast on the property?
No, but I believe the planning board will be asking for that on site plan.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Reynolds, any question for the applicant?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay. Mr. Byrne, any question?
Madam Chair, just a question. We did this particular piece of property a long time ago with Mr. Casio. And we worked out twenty-seven parking spaces. We asked for a three-foot strike separating the street from where he was going to park cars. But we never talked about lining the parking lot. I wonder if the board thinks that's necessary.
So I have on the screen now the parking plan that is part of the prior approval. That is an odd space, number twenty-seven. But I guess it's a way to show off a car for sale. I think striping of the lot is probably something that would be helpful, particularly because there are so, there's so much use of it. There's so much of this lot which is consumed by the parking spaces.
And we wanted striped, er, this land?
Well, I don't see a need to require a different plan from the applicant, given that this is an existing plan. This was drafted in 2015.
Do you have the conditions from that original special permit?
So we do. And I
I have it right here, you want me to?
I do, thank you so much. And I'll pass this to you, sir. But what is noted here, no outside storage of auto parts, materials and equipment or inoperable vehicles. No drop-off boxes. Maximum number of cars for sale, twenty-seven, with other spaces provided for employees and customers. Mark line three feet from the city property line. And I think that is indicated on this plan, but not marked on the property. No plastic banners or unprofessional signage. Hours of operation, Monday through Friday, eight to seven, closed Sunday. Business not to be operated as a nuisance. Means don't be a detriment to others. There's a condition that states ten plan as submitted on May 12, 2015. So I think that means you must comply with the parking plan you see before you. Dumpster to be kept to the rear of the property. Storage containers shall be screened by fencing and painted to match the building located on the property. I do believe that some of those conditions have not been complied with by the prior owner. So to Mr. Burns's point, you're proposing to have seven employees. There will be customers, but you want to have twenty-seven vehicles on the property. And there are only two other spaces marked. I take that back, there are not even two other spaces marked. It just starts out at one, two on the other side. How will we fit all of that on this property?
So the only thing I asked for twenty-seven because just for, so we won't have, as a two-bay garage, we won't have that much cars. The only thing, just for flexibility, if we need, let's say, we buy cars, they need extra work or something. So most, some of that parking space is gonna be empty. The seven employees, they won't be all of them at the dealership. So let's say there's people who, let's say, we buy cars, but we buy them from our house online on a computer or we'll go to the auction ourselves to purchase them. So it's not required to be there. It's gonna be, most of the time, two mechanics and then one salesman, two salesmen, that will be covering all the time. Two salesmen, just me and my brother, we always come together, live together in one car. And then my, our mechanic, they both live in Fitchburg. And then they're next to each other, so they always come in one car, now two. So most of the, the closest parking to the office, to the building, you know, we always, if we don't have seventy, twenty-seven cars, you know, we, this will be open for the customers. And then, you know, for us, we only need like two or three parking for the employees ourselves, which is will be on the left side of the building where the container is.
So will you be having the storage container there?
To be, in our, no, we won't have that. We're gonna take it up. And the purchase and sale agreement, it's written on it that we have, that we need, the owner has to take it up before we buy it.
So right on the rear of your building, there is a severe drop-off in the topography. And you actually abut in the back on the rail trail that has recently been constructed. And I understand that you are not the current owner of the property, but there is a substantial amount of trash and debris down that hill, behind the building, very visible from the rail trail. And definitively, one of the things that we'd be looking for is that to be cleaned up and kept clean and not, you know, just an opportunity to throw trash down the hill. So I also realize that from the other side of the rail trail, people may throw trash up onto your property. That may happen. But I would want to know that you would be willing to try to keep that area better and maintained than it is right now.
Yeah, of course.
Mr. Byrne, do you have any other questions?
No, I have to find it.
Okay. Mr. Talbot, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Mr. Gallagher, do you have any questions?
None at this time, Madam Chair, thank you.
Mr. Reynolds, do you have any questions?
No, I did not.
Okay. And Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Visited the property the other day, and I know that you're gonna be taking it forward. But again, to the chair's comments, there's a whole bunch of debris behind the building. And I think now that the rail trail is in, it's our opportunity that businesses that abut the rail trail need to start to pay attention to the rear landscaping and the cosmetic appearance. I don't want to put that burden on you, but I would like to put a condition or some conditions in this special permit that all debris behind the building be removed prior to the sale. And also another condition that all existing unregistered vehicles from the previous owner be removed from the property prior to the sale.
That's already stated in the purchase-sale agreement, that he has to take all his cars because we're bringing our own cars over there.
Thank you. The other thing is that, and again, you know, I want to see the business be successful. It's a gateway road into the city. And I think maybe initially due to the number of, and we learn as we see these businesses operate, that maybe that that number of vehicles for sale be reduced maybe to twenty to allow for parking for the employees and customer visits, for tow vehicles to bring vehicles in, and with the review period. So that as he gets going, that we can look at the success and how things are flowing and review and be able to look at further accommodations. As the business has been over the last few years, there's been, it's a lot on one space. We have to accommodate for snow removal and vehicles entering, exiting, backing up. So just some comments and hopefully maybe some conditions with future cosmetic upgrade to the rear of the building or rear landscaping. And that's it. It looks like they run a good business where they are. It looks like they want to expand and we look forward to
Yeah, we have on Google four-point-seven star out of five. You know, we've been very successful, been doing business in a good way. People likes us around the area. They buy a lot of cars from us.
Good.
We have really successful, you know, we have, you know, we've been in business for a long time. So we already know how a long time, so we already know how that business works. It's very challenging, people think it's easy, you just buy a car and flip it, I wish it's like that, you know? So it's very challenging, but at the same time, if you do it the right way, it's a good outcome out of it. The only thing I have, just one question, just for the drop-off key. I think, just the proposal, if I can have a drop-off for keys, because it's safe, because some people, let's say if their car break down at night, and they wanna tow it, it's unsafe to leave the key inside the car, or just give it on the visor, or like in the mailbox, because somebody maybe, if they know they can, you know, have access to the car. So with a drop-off, it will be safer for everybody, for the client, and then he'll have a peace of mind that, you know, his car is gonna get there safe, and nothing's gonna happen the next day. And a lot of people, let's say they purchase car and happen a lot, that, you know, they can come until after we close, and then we leave it for them to pick up their cars.
I think you misunderstanding what we're talking about. A drop-off box that we're talking about is not for keys, not for any of that, it's like for the yellow boxes that for clothing, the yellow boxes for, that's what we're, books, you know, those drop-off boxes.
Okay.
That's what we're talking about, not drop-off for keys.
Okay, okay.
Ignition boxes are a wonderful thing, but people have a tendency to overload them, and they just become a dumpster. I do wanna go back to the plan, Mr. McLaughlin, if you're completed.
Yes, and I think the only other thing is that the prior conditions for the previous applicant, you know, those-
It should be reinstated.
You know, the no banana signs, and vinyl signs, and professional signage only. Again, it's a gateway, we need to kinda make sure it's attractive to the businesses coming into town. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
I'm going to bring the parking plan back up on the screen. So these are the issues I see with this being, functioning as a good working plan. There's no indication on this plan where snow storage is going to be. Snow storage, so when you have to plow, where is the snow going to go?
So if we, if, let's say if we have a three, four, five, and then, you know, that's based on the other side, if we push all the snow, and we can push it behind the building, to that extra space that we have in the back, the 16 feet by 184.
So it's basically down the hill.
So technically, what we do, and it's easier for us to clean cars, what we do, we try to squeeze them as much as we can next to each other, like mirror to mirror to mirror. What I did that will eliminate all the snow coming between the cars, so it'll be easier for us to shovel, or like to clean cars. So let's say if we move all our cars, we park them on one side, and then we come when the snow is over, and in the middle of it, we just push everything clean, we clean the cars on the spot where is it, we move them, we push that way, and then we'll be done. Instead of just like, if we have them spread, then we have to clean in the middle, and then clean each and each, and it will be bigger space for us to be using.
You compact the parking-
Yeah, we compact, and then when they close to each other, the, like, doesn't, no, snow doesn't build that much between them. And then, we already, we have our truck, and that has a plow, so we'll not be using, any company will be using our own, we'll be doing it ourselves.
Okay. So in order for the light that you're casting from the building to reach all the way out to space 17, I think you're going to be having a little bit of light pollution on the properties. In other words, you know, blaring lights all at 24/7. I don't want to get into the specifics of that, but I think that what I'm going to say is light pollution should be addressed by the planning board. So I would keep an eye on that issue, 'cause you might, they might have some specific requirements as to how that lighting is done.
Okay.
The signage is existing, and there would be a condition about professional signage, so in other words, you're not gonna hand paint a sign, but really the vinyl banners-
Yeah, that's what I did over, in 91 Laurel Street, and it will be the same over there.
Yeah. I think the hard thing here is that I do not think there is room for 27 cars for sale on this lot, because you need some parking for employees and customers. And I don't want to reduce it any more than we have to, 'cause I know that having cars, more cars helps us sell more cars. But I think that if you have four spaces for employees and three spaces for customers, those are needed in order to have the customers have a place to park. It is a two-bay garage, so we, if you were able to keep in two cars at all times, or at all times that you needed to, so we could think about that as two spaces, okay? But I think that, which might bring you up to 22.
Yeah, the only thing that's tricky is that, the only thing is just, when we put the, we tend to like to put the cars outside for people who shops and to see the cars, so if, let's say there's two hiding inside, they wouldn't be exposed to people that they can, you know, shop for them, 'cause we have a lot of walk-in traffic, they're just driving by, they see a car that they like, and then, you know, they purchase it. And, you know, it's, the dealership business is not like, let's say it's a retail store, like clothes where you can fit 20 t-shirts and people, so you have, you have to accommodate everything, like, you know, four-wheel drive, three, four SUVs, three, four Sedans, three, four hatchbacks, so you have everything, so whenever a customer come, whatever you hear, he is asking for, you have something that he likes. If, and if we could take that container out, that will be another space. And then, you know, like I said, there will be three or four employee all the time over there. And so, you know, like three, four, and then the customers too, when they come, and, you know, especially dealers, there's not that much traffic, where like you have 30, 40 customer every day. Sometimes we only get two customers a day, they purchase car, and that's the whole-
Sure, but you don't have zero customers.
Mm-hmm, no, no, I'm saying about three or four.
Parking is what is on the plan. Yeah. I hope you don't have zero customers. The other thing, I would like to understand, you're buying salvage vehicles, or you're buying vehicles at auction that need repair? Are they salvage title vehicles?
No, everything we buy is clean title. We don't have anything that's salvage or repairable.
And you're gonna store them on-site until they're repaired and sold?
Well, the technique that we use, especially because, you know, small dealership, if we sell four, we buy four, if we sell three, we buy three. And then there's something called in the auction, green light, and we tend to buy more of that. Green light, that mean, when they trade in their car, let's say to a big dealership, big dealership, they can't sell it, because it's a 2016 Nissan Rogue, and the Nissan only can sell 19, 20 to 24, pre-certified. And then they check it, their certified tech, and then the car is good, they'll sell in the auction with a green light, that mean, everything is good on the car, they're guaranteeing it for seven days. So we got it, we know the car doesn't need anything. And if we not, we see any problem with it, we return it back to them. So most of our cars, we tend to buy them, just, like, the minimum that we do, no matter what, we do, we change the oil, even, you know, if the car doesn't need anything, and then we try to flip them as fast as possible, because that's how we make our money. If cars are sitting, we're losing money. We buy them, we fix them right away, most of the stuff, we do our, like, homework, we check the car before we buy them, if it needs something, we order them. We have, you know, suppliers from like O'Reilly Auto Zone, to junkyards, to dealership that we have, will have account with, that, you know, we can order everything, the car comes, we fix it same day, detail it the next day, it won't be at the property, we have-
And you're not having cars there that need bodywork done?
We would, yeah, we buy some, but we send them to a body shop.
Send them out.
Yeah, I have, we have a contract with-
What I wanna make sure of is whether we're going to have cars that, you know, need bodywork, so they're, they look like-
No, 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 it's just if we, like, you know, they have scratches on the bumper, you know, we don't wanna sell it like this, we just send it to a dealer, to a body shop.
Right, but something that has its front end shut-
No, 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 we don't do salvage and all that stuff.
And what I, I don't wanna, again, have an operation. Mr. McLaughlin has to leave us for the evening. I don't wanna have an operation where we have long-term inoperable vehicles sitting there. So if we were to imply, apply the condition that you don't have unregistered, long-term inoperable vehicles sitting there, and given what you're telling me for more than 90 days, would you be able to comply with that?
Yeah, yeah. No, this is our goal, like, this is our everyday goal, is to go to work, try as fast as possible, you know, buy the car that doesn't need that much work, because if it doesn't need much work, that mean we're not spending that much money on it. And the way we work right now, and this is what helped us a lot, sell a lot of cars, and we've been successful, that, you know, we bring the car, we go to auction every day, from Monday to Friday, so we don't just like, if we bought, we sold three, we just go one auction, we have to buy them no matter what. We go every day, and we try to get the best deal possible, the best prices, and we have a lot of, we know that, like, the prices, we know if it's a good deal, if it's not a good deal, if we're paying top dollar or no, we have a lot of experience in it. So what we do, we try to get them as soon as, buy them as cheap as possible, and then we fix them as best as possible, and put them as the cheapest as we can possible. So most of our car right now, they're all a great deal, $2,000, $1,500 under the price, to flip them fast, that's what I'm saying, is like, we want to flip them fast.
I appreciate that. We, you know, I'm trying to bring, I think, this hearing to a close for our board members, and I wanna, I understand the business that you're in, and I appreciate that you're advertising that you run a good business. Okay? Cool. All right. Can I have the prior decision back, or did Mike take that with him?
He may have taken it with him.
It's on open guff still.
I'm going to bring the prior decision up.
Mike took it? Shouldn't have handed it back to him. Sorry.
No, you're right about that. Pardon us for a moment, I'm just trying to bring up the prior decision. Fortunately, that is the prior, prior decision. I have it. Okay. So I think we'd be looking at incorporating all of the decisions, I do think there's a modification needed in the number of vehicles. I take the suggestion that striping be done as appropriate.
We can't do that unless we have a new plot plan. And then, what are we gonna do then? After we have that, cut them down to 20.
We don't need a new plot plan, we just need to designate what the spaces are used for.
Okay. Fine.
All right. There's a condition here that the dumpster is to be kept to the rear of the property. The dumpster is marked on the plan to the side of the building, I don't know that you could keep the dumpster to the rear of the property, because the drop-off is pretty severe and pretty much right after the building. Am I right? Do you think that there's space for the dumpster to fit on the rear of the property?
Yeah, yeah, the dumpster that's right now has wheels, so we can push it always the day of the, whenever they come to the front, and then we can put it in the back, so it won't be exposed.
Okay. All right. And you are not gonna keep the storage condition, container, so we don't need to worry about the condition that the storage container to be screened by fencing and painted to match the building. But I think we'd add a condition that says, "No storage container."
No.
Does any other board member have a comment or question before we go to deliberation? Without objection, then, I'm going to close the public hearing. Given that the hearing is closed, the board members deliberate among themselves. Any board member have an indication that they would not be willing to allow the special permit? And Mr. Reynolds, you're a voting member at this point, so if you need to speak up, please do so.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I have no objection.
Thank you, sir. Does any board member have any particular conditions they would like to discuss or see added to this decision?
Seeing that we have a new owner here, and they are doing away with the storage container, which was supposed to be screened, why don't we add that the dumpster should be moved to the rear of the building and screened?
This will go to planning too, so it will go for site plan review.
Okay.
But certainly, they can- Well, they can, incorporating any conditions of the site plan review is also a good condition. Mr. Gallagher, anything to add?
No, but I have a question of you. The current site plan that was given by the planning board. I guess my question would be, would this apply, or would there probably be modifications to it?
I think there's gonna be a modified site plan, and the planning board has indicated it wants this application before it, for site plan review.
Okay.
So that would, that would take place. What the planning board does in its site plan review is in the purview of the planning board.
Just wanna make sure the applicant understands that as well.
That there's a second city process you're going to have to go to. Sure the building department directed to the right person.
And he's been, he's been connected with Ms. Wack, who made a comment on the form of intent as well.
Okay. I'd like some discussion of the number of vehicles allowed for sale on-site. We have 27 spaces plus two bays in the garage to work with. I can't see, and I see that there's the possibility of adding a third, another space with storage container was. But I think that there needs to be at least three parking spaces for employees, and there needs to be, and there needs to be at least two parking spaces for customers. Go ahead, Mr. Byrne.
I'd say we'd put it down at 20, 20 cars for sale. And as the business grows, and he wants more spaces, he can come back and ask for them.
I would be willing to go up to 22.
22? Okay.
That's what I was gonna do.
22 is a good number.
Yeah, but I don't think 27, given the operation plan that we have, is gonna be feasible, so I'm inclined to 22. That should be enough, and not too much of a reduction in the operation plan. So I think that condition would change. And any other condition that anyone wants to bring up for discussion? Okay. So I am going to review the conditions that are proposed. First of all, there would be a sunset clause. The special permit would expire or terminate upon the transfer or sale of the business or change of ownership. And what we would do is associate that with the property owner, which I understand will be Bullos LLC, and- Is it, is it Tufik Maroon, or is that your name?
No, that's my first name.
Just your first name?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, but it would- So, um, but it would be you and your brother?
Yeah.
What is your brother's name?
Teddy Bullos. Teddy, T-E-D-Y.
T-E-D-Y? Okay. Thank you. Sorry. So the, it would be on transfer of ownership from Bullos LLC, Tufik Maroon Bullos, or Teddy Bullos? No outside storage of auto parts, materials, and equipment or inoperable vehicles, except for vehicles held and actively marketed for sale, which may be kept for up to ninety days. No drop-off charitable donation boxes. Maximum number of cars for sale, twenty-two.
Debris at the back of the building.
Sure, I'm going to go through the ones on here first.
Okay.
No plastic banners or unprofessional signage. Hours of operation, Monday through Friday, eight to six-thirty. Saturday, eight to three. No Sundays. Business not to be operated as a nuisance. Parking to be according to the plan, dated May twelfth, twenty fifteen, by R. Wilson and Associates. And I'm going to change that date to March twenty-fifth, twenty fifteen. Which is the actual date of the plan. Parking to be striped within six months of the operation of the building, business. Dumpster to be moved to the rear of the property.
And screened.
And screened. The storage container and all junk or inoperable vehicles to be removed from the property prior to the commencement of operations. All debris on the premises, including on the slope behind the building, to be removed. And the rear of the property kept clean and well-maintained. The applicant will address any light pollution with the planning board through site plan review. And any conditions of the site plan review and approval shall be incorporated as a condition of the special permit. All right. Anyone else have a condition? All right. I'd look for a motion. Very correct. I think this requires a review date. And I would like to look for a review, I think, in the March timeframe.
I make a motion ZBA twenty-four thirty be accepted and passed, with the condition so noted, and the review, March twenty-twenty-five.
I think it's March eleven. March eleven. Do we have a second on the motion?
A second.
Okay. As Mr. Reynolds will be voting, we need to do a roll call vote. Mr. Reynolds, aye or nay?
Aye.
Mr. Byrne?
Aye.
Mr. Talbot?
Aye.
Mr. Gallagher?
In favor, aye.
And I am an aye as well, so it passes unanimously.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. You have heard what I've said about the process. Decision must be written, filed with the city clerk. There must be twenty days allowed to pass for any appeal after filing with the city clerk. After that, you are to record the special permit at the registry of deeds and bring that to the building department. You also have the site plan review process with the planning board. All right?
Thank you so much.
Questions, direct them to the building department. Good luck with your business, I hope you're very successful.
Thank you so much. Have a great night.
You too.
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
New business before adjournment.
Second. No, we got more to talk about.
All right.
We have new business.
So is this miscellaneous business that we can allow under OML?
Yes.
Okay.
It was not perceived within forty-eight hours, and there's no action needed. It's more of an update, just so that the board knows. As you may remember, Robin retired in January, and Mercedes has been running the ship administratively alone since then. And even though she wasn't asking for the help, she needed the help. And the city council funded a part-time, nineteen-hour-a-week principal clerk stenographer position. So I'm proud to let the board know that we have hired somebody, and he is starting next week, so that there will be a week of training between him and Mercedes's much-needed vacation. And we are trying to set it up so that, since Mercedes will be away during our special meeting later this month, that hopefully he'll be able to come and pinch-hit for her, for that meeting.
Excuse me. Gentlemen, I'm sorry, it interferes with the audio, would you mind going into the lobby? Thank you so much. Sorry for that. I'm, I'm sorry. Have a good night, everybody.
So, so the gentleman, his name is, is Frank, and he's starting officially on Monday. He'll have a week of training for Mercedes, and then she'll be off for that week. And once, after, once she's back, his regular schedule is going to be Tuesday to Friday, eleven forty-five to four-thirty.
Well, that is great news, and.
Good for Mercedes.
For Mercedes.
Thank you.
And he comes with a very unique skill set, so hopefully he'll be able to help the department. He just finished his MBA at Fitchburg State, and he's been working, he's Six Sigma Green Belt Lean Certified, which means he's done a lot of efficiency work to learn how operations can be streamlined, which fits along well with my goals and the mayor's goals of streamlining operations in our department and citywide. And he's worked in mostly management and leadership roles for the last fifteen years in various aspects of the manufacturing industry. And he's trying to dial it back a bit. So that's why he's coming to join our team in Fitchburg.
I look forward to welcoming him and, and receiving his help along with the zoning board and the operations. Good news. Anyone else?
And he'll be a support for Mercedes.
Yes.
He's going to be supporting me. Just, I don't know if you want to mention that November, we have a holiday, November twenty-five. So it's going to be a little different on that month.
Yep, in November of twenty-twenty-five, we're setting the schedule for next year. In November of twenty-twenty-five, the Tuesday is a holiday, so we will be meeting on our Thursday alternate day of November thirteenth.
Veterans Day?
Veterans.
Yeah.
Veterans Day. All right.
Not Thanksgiving.
Returning to our prior motion, all those in favor of bringing the meeting to an adjournment?
All right. Oh, do we need to do this as a roll call?
Mr. Reynolds, I want to mail his package for the next two, for the next two weeks' meeting.
All right, I'm going to call this meeting adjourned. Everybody, have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.